Town Hall, No Quite Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. The time is 7:00 PM. Welcome, everyone, tonight. We're being broadcast live on Channel 18 and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website We're also being videoed and recorded tonight. First, I'd like to have a moment of silence and a prayer, if you wish, for Ray Jack, our consulting engineer, who passed away over the weekend. He was so knowledgeable about water quality and sewer systems. He was just a great human being. We will miss him very, very much. If you will, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mike, would you start it off?
I declare the flag of the United States of America. To the republic from which it stands. Under God, in the heavens, in the heavens, in the justice for all.
The minutes of the June 7 meeting. Has everyone looked at them? Has anyone looked at them? Any changes or edits?
Nope.
Okay. Any changes or edits?
No.
My motion to approve.
No?
Nope.
Oh, you're in this if we have deliberation. Okay. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes of June 7, 2023, as prevented? So be it. All in favor? All in favor?
Need a second, Karen.
You need a second.
Aye. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous, motion passes. Okay, we have three public hearings tonight. I'm going to permit public comment after all public hearings, if the Board deliberates. Public comment should relate to the public hearing on this part of the meeting. Toward the end of the meeting, I'll permit public comment on any other matters that are not related. You wish to comment? When you're called to speak, just walk up to the microphone, state your name, and address for the record. Okay. Public hearing number one.
We gotta wait until 7:10.
Pardon me?
We gotta wait until 7:10.
Oh, you're right. Okay. Well, we'll do something else in the meantime.
I need the Board's signatures on the signatory page that gets filed with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds.
Okay.
So if I could pass this around and obtain the signatures, Madam Chair, I would appreciate that.
And then I can give the report on the Charter Review Committee, if you'd like me to, Madam Chair.
Okay.
As we're signing. Okay. So the Charter Review Committee had held a public hearing this week on June 20 at 6:30. By my count, there was 11 residents in the room, and two residents submitted comments by email. Anyways, I just wanted to go over quickly some of the comments that the Charter Review Committee received during that public hearing. Richard Klein suggested that Article 3 of the Charter be changed, so that there is a term limit of two consecutive terms for all elected officials. He also noted later on in the meeting that under Section 1-6 intergovernmental relations that the town should add, in addition to the United States government and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that it can enter into agreements with the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. And also that there should be a preamble to the Charter that describes the unique relationship and history of Mashpee. Mr. Richard Ryder commented on Section 5-7, the Planning and Construction Building Committee. He noted that other committees kind of, the definition and the charge of that committee tends to overlap with other committees, and that should all kind of be kind of combined into one, and that DPW would have then a public committee to assist the oversight of projects that are over something like worth $100,000, like the bigger projects. So I thought that was interesting. He really spent a lot of time doing that. Jay Marie Stevenson testified that throughout the document, the words "Board of Selectment" should be changed to "Select Board," and that the preamble should have a land acknowledgement recognizing that our land was Aboriginal land before we came here. She also requested a standing item of a budget for the Inclusion and Diversity Committee, of which she is the chair. So we giggled about that. She wants a budget. And she suggested that we change our administrative code to "Add a Grant Writer." So that was interesting, too. Let's see. Lynn Barbie noted that the definition of voter is a little vague, and it should everywhere say "Registered Voter." She suggested that the Finance Committee should return to being an elected board. And I thought it was pretty interesting that she compared it to other elected boards, and saying that the Finance Committee is just as important as all these other elected boards, including the Library Board. Yvonne Courtney, who's a member of the Board of Registars, stood up and gave a very passionate speech about having more boards and committees elected, including the FinCom, and she felt that would add more diversity to the town. And our town clerk, Debbie Kay, stood up and testified that the position of town clerk should stay elected. There was some discussion about that. Also, Lynn Barbie noted that if we could put it in the Charter, that our public buildings are updated with respect to IT and remote participation. We had a Klan mother come, and I'm sorry, I didn't write down her last name, but her first name is Shirley.
Shirley.
Shirley. She came with Amy Peters.
Okay.
And I apologize for not writing down her last name. But she was the last speaker, and she testified that she felt that all boards and committees in town should have at least one member of the Wampanoag Tribe. We also received a public comment from Michaela Colombo. And it was a long email, so I'll try to summarize it. She supported the FinCom reverting to an elected board. She did not support putting term limits in place in the Charter. She agreed that the Charter Review Committee and the Charter should have independent legal counsel looking at it. And that we should continue to have open town meeting.
Okay. Wrap it up, Mary, please.
Yep. And that she fully supports a preamble to the Charter that recognizes the federally recognized Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. We also got an email from Mark Whitman, who wanted us to think about different options for town meetings.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Public hearing number one. Public notice pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 48, Section 11. The Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 1, 2023, at 7:10. This is the original notice. At the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willow Bend Country Club's special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 14-unit, single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Course at 275 Quinacquahsette Avenue, Map 69, Block 32. The existing single-family dwelling is proposed for demolition. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willow Bend project would be increased to 287 if the Board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinacquahsette into the Willow Bend special permit as allowed. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected to and served by the existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willow Bend project. The applicant is Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, location 275 Quinacquahsette Avenue, Map 69, Block 32. The request. Applicant proposes to modify the Willow Bend Country Club's special permit to construct a 14-unit, single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Course. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willow Bend project would increase to 287 if the Board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinacquahsette into the Willow Bend special permit as allowed. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected to and served by the existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willow Bend project. All right. I recognize the party proponent.
Good evening. For the record, Jack McElhenney, attorney for Southworth Mashpee Properties, the petitioner. Here with me, Matt Eddy of Baxter-Nye, the project engineer. And on the phone link, Troy Miller, who's the Director of Development for Southworth Development, and Peter Alpert, who is the General Counsel for Southworth Development. Thank you for hearing us tonight. As the Board is aware, we're going to be holding two separate successive hearings tonight. The first being simply an update of the continued public hearing on the Cranberry Point Project. The second being the opening of the public hearing on a related but distinct modification to modify the bedroom count cap included in the 1991 permit. So on the, starting with the Cranberry Point project, not much has happened. Obviously, there's been no formal changes in the plan set since that time. I'll let Matt speak to a couple of developments on the Conservation Commission review process, so that the Board has the most up-to-date information on where things stand.
Thank you, Jack. For the record, Matthew Eddy, professional engineer with Baxter-Nye Engineering Surveying. Just on the conservation process, so we went through at the last hearing two weeks ago the changes that we had done to the site plan. Those changes are to conservation as well, and as you know, the Conservation Commission is in the process of hiring a third-party reviewer to review the overall project. So communicated with Drew McManus, the conservation agent, yesterday. LEC had submitted for that contract. A contract has been submitted to the town manager by Drew, and is currently under review by the town manager. So we're waiting on that. That's the status of that. Other than that, as Jack said, there's been no changes to plans or information. There is one thing that I would like to clarify for the record, though. At the hearing two weeks ago, I had stated on the record during the Conservation Commission review that Drew McManus, again, conservation agent, had stated that he felt that this project was a net environmental benefit, and he absolutely stated that. It was questioned that he didn't state that. If you watched the tape of the hearing at 1 hour and 46 minutes into the hearing, this was on 5/4, the May 4th, and I'm quoting here, paraphrasing somewhat, but quote his general observation, "In many site visits, the project would provide a net environmental benefit by restoring riverfront habitat." And so he had stated that on the record, and Drew and I had had several discussions and meetings throughout the process preliminarily, even before submission. So I felt that we were on the same page as what we were doing for the project design. So I did just want to correct the record with that information. So that's all I have.
Thank you. So actually, there's no new information, so I think we're looking for a continuance here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me.
You want to say something?
Yes, I'd like to add to that. So we have, we recognize that several members of the Board have had serious reservations about the current layout of the project, and we are going to propose tonight that we are prepared to withdraw the Cranberry Point project without prejudice if the Board acts favorably on our modification request on the bedroom count. So I would like to request that we continue this public hearing till some point down the road later, so we could have a discussion on the bedroom count, see how that plays out, and if that is favorable, we would prepare to withdraw. We would, you know, we would intend to refile at some point. We recognize we have some work to do to address some of the concerns that have been issued, and to try to align the project more with the goals that we have heard. But at the moment, the bedroom count is a more central issue, and we would like to focus on getting that resolved.
So if I understand you, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. You want to withdraw the 12-unit, the 275, that at this time, and then move for a time or move on tonight to this second public hearing?
Not quite what I said. I'd like to keep the hearing open till later this evening. If the modification for the bedroom count can be favorably resolved tonight, either modified or waived, then come back to the Cranberry Point and withdraw that.
Okay.
Okay.
I think the Board should be continuing this public hearing till 7:30. Is that enough time to go over the bedroom?
I think we might need a little more time. Do you not think so? You think 7:30?
Yes, that's fine with us, if you want to pick a time later in the agenda.
We can always move it ahead.
So moved. I mean, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
When does the public hearing supposed to be? 7:15, so we can open the hour.
Okay. We should move on, then. Public hearing number two. Do I need to read this hearing notice again?
Yes. It's a separate notice, and when you've already read.
It is a separate one, yeah, of course. Just so people in the audience know why the date is different. This public notice was published in the paper in June, June 2 and June 9. So the language is a little different, but we have to read it again. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 48, Section 11, and the Town of Mashpee zoning bylaws, Section 174-24(c)(9), the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 21, 2023, at 7:20 at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willow Bend Country Club's special permit. This application requests that the existing condition in the November 1991 special permit modification decision affirming the limit of the total number of bedrooms within the Willow Bend project area to 853 be amended. The agenda. Applicant, Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. Location, Willow Bend Permit Area. Request. Applicant proposes to modify the Willow Bend's special permit by amending the condition limiting the number of bedrooms allowed in the project. Currently, Willow Bend is allowed 853 bedrooms. Willow Bend proposes to remove this condition or increase the maximum allowance. Party proponent.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Jack McElhenney, attorney. Matt Eddy, our engineer, is here. And as I noted, Troy Miller and Peter Alpert, General Counsel, are on the phone.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mc. Do we need to continue the 7:20, or?
Yep.
It's 7:20 now.
Yeah. You need to open it and continue it.
Pardon?
You need to open it and continue it.
Open it up, and then I'll continue. Open it up at 7:20.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't have any time.
At this time, we're opening the 7:20 public hearing, Marcello Malagni Forestale Road LLC.
I make a motion, we continue this till 7:45?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Please proceed. Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Relative to the bedroom cap modification, frankly, this was a surprise to us when it came up. It's ancient history, I think, in the context of the project, but I will try to give you a brief summary of our position relative to the cap. First and foremost, I want to stress for the Board, the new members, Southworth Development has never built a single unit at this project that has not been approved by this Board or by its predecessors. There has been, in my experience with this, which is not complete but close to it, there has never been any discussion of the bedroom cap in any of the 35 modifications since 1991 in the 32 years. You know, we acknowledge that it's there. The bedroom count from 1991 and the 853 magic number memorialized the bedroom limit utilized by the DEP when they originally approved the capacity of the groundwater discharge permit for our sewerage treatment plant. I think, as folks are generally aware, DEP uses a calculation of 110 gallons per day per bedroom. The original proponents, which completely predate my time, proposed a plant sized at what it was built at, 113,000. That included capacity for 853 bedrooms, plus the other uses at the project, which are primarily locker rooms, restaurants, et cetera, associated with the golf club. That's where that number has come from. Since at least 2006, the DEP, and they have to review each sewer connection, each sewer extension we make, the DEP has allowed the connection of additional bedrooms beyond the 853 cap based on the developer's demonstration that there was more than adequate remaining capacity in the plant to handle those flows. And just to put this in context, the plant today, which has over 1,000 bedrooms, and connected to it, I'll come back to that, but over 1,000 bedrooms, typically runs during the summer months when our occupancy is at its highest, at approximately 60,000 to 65,000 gallons per day. Over the 4th of July weekend, it might spike up to 80,000 gallons per day. The design capacity is 113,000. The actual physical capacity is 130,000, meaning the equipment was size larger than the permit was designed for. So there's plenty of capacity. As a general philosophy, Willow Bend has, and the predecessors have sought to connect everything they did there to the plant and beyond that. So some of you may remember when we did the new nine holes, we connected 200 bedrooms at Katuod Bay condominium. We absorbed the entire cost of that, their sewerage treatment. Their septic system was failing, and we absorbed the cost for the pump station and ran that all the way up to our plant that connected it. Now granted, we didn't do that out of our good graces. That was a negotiated condition for the new nine, but it's a substantial environmental benefit, and it sits right there at the head of the bay. And we've connected all the Pleasant Park lots, which are not part of our project but which we control. We connected all of the Shoestring Bay lots, which are not technically part of the special permit, but again, we owned and developed. And again, I'm not saying we deserve to be sainted for that. That was a condition of our approval, but our philosophy has been to connect everything. And since 2006, the DEP has allowed us to make those connections, and our agreement with them is we'll be allowed to continue to make connections until such time as we exceed 80% of the permitted capacity on a rolling 30-day basis, I believe, is the language in the correspondence. So that's the history from our point on that. Prior planning boards, not this planning, but prior planning boards have approved modifications of the Village in 2009, which was 40 units, Willow Circle in 2010, which was six units, and River Bend in 2018, all of which created and allowed bedrooms in excess of the 853. And, you know, I think we were transparent at that time in terms of what we were building, how many stories, how many units, what the mix was. Granted, none of that was memorialized in the permit. This is just context. So, you know, the bedroom count, per our view, is largely irrelevant at this time and should have been removed long ago. We're therefore requesting that the Board either modify the permit to drop the condition or modify it to simply state that the total number of bedrooms permitted in the overall project should not exceed those permitted by the DEP under the groundwater discharge permit to bring those two permits in sync.
Town manager?
I haven't been promoted yet, Karen.
Town planner.
I don't know if that is a promotion.
Congratulations on your promotion.
Ed, would you like to go first?
So just to clarify for the Board, I think I heard the treatment plant's max capacity, you say 113, Jack?
That's the physical capacity of the actual components.
That's the permitted capacity. That's the permitted capacity, right?
Yeah.
And you're at 65 plus or minus on the 4th of July?
Maybe not on the 4th of July, but throughout the summer months.
Oh, excuse me. Right. And what was the peak in the 4th of July?
Yeah, I think we've hit 80,000.
Okay, 80,000. So I went through, I'm going through this exact same situation in Edgertown, where the 4th of July is their biggest day.
Yeah.
That's it. Okay. And the rest of the year, they don't come close to 80% of their capacity, and they have a very good operating treatment plant, as from the data I've looked at, Willow Bend Treatment Plant. So, Madam Chair, I talked a little bit about this with Evan. You know, I think a good, the checks and balances that Mr. McElhenney is explaining provide some support for protection by the town. Number one, the check is that you don't get to build any other units without this Board's approval. It's not like they can just go.
In the special permit area.
In their special permit area, right. So it's still, just like you had to do for Willow Circle, just like you had to do for River Bend, and those projects I've been inspecting the construction of, by the way, that's already under construction, the Willow Circle one is under construction, and the Willow Bend is now done, 99%, just some minor details left. So there's a check and balance in that future development in the Willow Bend property special permit area requires this Board's approval. So there's a check and balance in that future development in the, in the, in Willow Bend property, special permit area, requires this board's approval, and, and just suitable language could be placed in it, so that's required. And then the other check and balance is that the nutrient loading from wastewater is also included in the review by DEP. So the, the protection, if you will, of environmentally, certainly, and operationally of the site, I think having this board approve future development, having the restriction of the operating capacity of the treatment plant puts in itself its own corrective policing of the amount of development that can occur. So I, I think both of those in place should give you some comfort and confidence to make a decision on, on which way you feel. If you feel still a little, if there's some hesitancy, perhaps there's some middle ground that, that the applicant can provide the board for, to add some comfort and confidence about essentially removing, essentially that's what they're requesting, removing the bedroom count restriction, and, but imposing the wastewater treatment plant restriction as a realistic way to manage the wastewater.
Okay, well, tonight, we can't make any real decisions from what we, we see. I did consult with town council, and it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have 853 bedroom cap, and we are over by about 140 or more bedrooms.
More than that.
I, I don't have an exact number, I don't know that anyone other than the town of Mashpee has an exact number. I believe the number is closer to 960, but yes, we are over the 853.
Okay, at the time of the publication of the public notice for the original 14 units, were you, were you aware that you had, you were over the 853 cap?
Yes, I wasn't aware specifically of the 853 cap, but I was aware of the total number of, of units approved.
When you, you, this time, you provided us in our packet, this Bent Twig Limited Partnership Willow Bend Development, modification of special permit decision, it was signed by one person, a vice chair of the planning board on November 12, 1991, and Roman numeral four, modification to special permit, this is on page four. The board voted unanimously on November 6, 1991, to grant proposed modifications and relief requested, and to modify the special permit as follows. By adding a new condition 29 as follows, notwithstanding anything to the contrary in the special permit, the total number of residential units permitted, which may be of any type allowed under section 9.3 or under section 9.4, shall not exceed 287, and the total number of bedrooms within the project, not including any den, study, or family room, shall not exceed 853. And that was signed and agreed to, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yes, so. You didn't, you didn't disclose this in your public notice, that the, the cap was 853, you didn't disclose this fact.
I, I wasn't aware of the issue, or the fact that that number was in there at that point.
Okay.
And I didn't disclose it at the time, you know, any time over the last 15 years, because it's never been discussed by the board. We have maybe seven or eight permits drafted by the former town planner, which are very specific about when we added a neighborhood, or sometimes we went from six units to four units of a building. He tracked, you know, consistently, and, you know, very, particularly the number of units. No one has mentioned the.
The number of units, but not, he didn't track the bedrooms.
Correct, he didn't track it, we didn't track it.
Okay.
That's, that's not true.
That's not true?
No, Tom always tracked the bedroom, Sue, and I was on the board, ever since you've been on, working for them, and I can't understand you, you, you always took me as a smart, pretty smart lawyer, and you didn't know the bedroom counts were going over, and you never told the people, their checks, the EBT, for the bedroom to tie into the sewer. You didn't say, hey, we're over our count, they don't care how many bedrooms you got there, they're just seeing if that sewer system can connect. You never once came, even like when you came with this, you knew you were over the bedrooms, and you kind of, I don't want to say, but you kind of lied to us, because you're a smart lawyer.
I object to that.
And don't tell me you didn't know you were over the bedrooms all that long, I, I don't understand, and I, I know Tom was always concerned about bedrooms and the water, and, and how many units you were going to have, because I've been on the board, we gave you like 22, we always gave you what you want, but you should have told us, hey, we're going over the bedrooms. So, okay, that's all I have to say.
I don't know if that's a productive discussion, I would simply say.
The way you act like, oh, nobody told us, you should have told us about how many bedrooms you were going over, not us telling you, okay?
I think you made your point.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dennis. So, you know, let's say arguendo, let, let me just ask you a couple things, that you have 853 cap on the bedrooms, and if we're right, based on the assessor's data, or it's, you know, it's not totally accurate, 140-plus extra bedrooms, and now with this project, with the 12 units, you can build three bedrooms, times 12, it's 36, so you could build 853, let's say you got 140, we're, we're probably in the ballpark there, and 36, so now you'd be 1,024 bedrooms. Alternatively, you also said that you could build a fourth bedroom on those 12 units in the basement, at the low, the lower level, not that everybody would.
We have not, we have not applied for that approval to DEP. DEP is limited to three bedrooms on these units, so.
Okay, so you're saying you will not be built, if we allow this, you would not be building a fourth bedroom?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, is that something new, because you had said you were propose, that it was a possibility?
It was an earlier, it was an earlier.
Okay.
Version of things, yes.
Okay, we're, we're going to, I'm going to follow town council's advice, and we need to certify the bedroom count to see exactly how many bedrooms are over the cap. And it's my understanding, and we talked long and hard with this, the only way we can do this is to take a physical count of the bedrooms. Are you willing to permit the building department to do a physical count of these bedrooms, to see what the overage is? You want to think about it?
I'm not sure what you're, you're asking, I mean, we, we don't own these homes.
I, I know that, I know that.
So how, how would we do that, Madam Chair?
The, my understanding is, you know, the building commissioner, the building department, is zoning enfor, is the zoning enforcement officer, he wears a badge, and he would, or his designees, or somebody with a badge, I would guess, would go to those houses and see, do a physical count of the bedroom.
And how they do that, they look at the permit, permit that it's three bedroom house, then they can say, we want to see if this is.
Use your mic, you, can you repeat that in the microphone?
Oh.
Yes, thank you.
The bill, they look at the bill of the permit, and if it says three bedrooms, and they knock on the door, they say, you have three bedrooms, and then they can go in and check, because a lot of times, you build a room, and you don't put a closet in.
Right.
And you leave a six-foot opening, and when they come in to give you occupancy permit, they look and say, okay, that ain't a bedroom, the minute you shut the door on them, you put the closet in, and make the bedroom door.
Right, so they could have had theoretically, in any individual house, three bedrooms, but now you might come in and find five bedrooms.
Yeah, because those houses are real big.
Madam Chair, so I agree with you, I think that we should have a certified count by our zoning enforcement agent, I just would think that it's going to be very time-consuming.
I've already calculated the time, you want to hear my?
May I finish my sentence, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but.
Please, I'm talking, I want to just say what I think it is, and, and this is something for you to think about. If there are, I use 275 units, I guess there's a few less, or one less, but I'd use 275, if it took 10 minutes per house, and I may be underestimating it, it would be 2,750 minutes divided by 60 minutes, would be approximately 49 hours. If you divide that by, if they work five hours a day, only one person, it would take 9.8 or 10 days to do this, so that's a consideration, and it, and there is a significant cost that will be imposed, you know, on the building department, if this, if you agree to do this. And could you, would you be able to check the town council about the, the compensation?
I could.
Pardon me?
I, I can do that.
You can do that, yes, all right, yes, Mary.
My suggestion is that we do have a, a board engineer that perhaps has some time and capacity to assist the building department with that task, that's all.
Mike, do you have a comment? No, I'm, I'm, you're not phase through.
Karen, may I make a point?
Say anything more?
No, I simply say, we, we don't have the authority to, to get you access to anyone's home, you know, the town has.
Yes, town and council.
I guess I would ask the larger question of, of what, what's the, what's the objective here? All these homes are connected to our sewerage treatment plant, I have, you know, explained, this is all, everything out there's been approved by the DEP. Dennis, you know, we've been working together for a long time, I, I object to the comment that anyone's been lied to here. I think if you go back, if anyone on this board could find a reference to a bedroom since 1991, I stand corrected, but it has never been brought up to my attention, and I, so.
Madam Chair, I would like to speak.
I'd like to, town planner.
But before the project proponent speaks, I would like to speak, because I'd like to address what he just said.
Okay, Mary.
I just want to expand a little bit upon our discussion with council, if I could.
Let, let Evan speak first, Mary.
I am, he is speaking.
Jack, I think, you know, when Karen and I met with council on this particular issue, it was very well understood that Willow Bend does not have the authority to grant access for the town to enter anyone's private dwelling. What town council had suggested that Karen and the board ask of Willow Bend is to do the best you can to work with the neighborhoods, associations, and the residents of Willow Bend to get us the best possible access you can, to make an effort. Council felt strongly that the board wouldn't be in a, in a position to contemplate waiving or otherwise modifying this condition without knowing with, with near certainty or absolute certainty what the existing condition is of the overall permit. I would generally affirm, though, that in my research of all of the decisions related to Willow Bend, the 1991 decision that's in question here is the last reference to the bedroom cap in the entire permit history. Just wanted to clarify that.
I will take, I would take that back, I would speculate that if you've got 50% of the people to agree, that would be high, I would ask, you know, members of this board, if you were asked to have somebody come in and inspect your home, you know, what percentage of people would agree to that, or at New Seaberry, where Mr. Richardson is, people like their privacy. And again, I, you know, with all due respect, I, I don't understand the, the ultimate goal here, because even if we established a number tomorrow, there's nothing, we don't know, if somebody could have a, a room in their basement, that they go pull a building permit and turn it to a bedroom, they don't come to Willow Bend and tell us about it, they could convert a room over a garage. And again, it's all being treated by the sewerage treatment plant, so, you know, what's driving the concern, I guess, before we, I, you know, I, I would think this would be a six-month process, honestly, it, you know.
Karen, can I ask another question of the applicant? Jack, you had mentioned in your opening remarks that you had general knowledge of the number of bedrooms based on the reports you issue or requests you make to DEP. Are you able to provide the board with those documents, or do those, do those provide some attestation to the existing condition?
Yeah, we're happy.
Can we start there?
We're happy to bring in our engineer.
Can I speak, Madam Chair? I've been waiting, I've been waiting.
That's it, that's, I just wanted to pose that question, for consideration, yes.
Mary?
So, just so the public knows, that I did ask the project proponent in April of 2023, what was the number of bedrooms, because I did see that there was a condition in the special permit of a bedroom cap, and there were people in the room that were there that night, and they remember me asking that.
I, I remember you asking it.
Thank you, I've asked it repeatedly, and now I still haven't gotten an answer, so to me, I don't really even know if we're in violation of the special permit or not, okay? So that's the first thing, is I, I always respect what previous boards have, have, have put as conditions, but right now, I still do not have evidence that you're in violation of the special permit, because you have not given me a definitive answer. I think you have a definitive answer, and there's several pieces, sources of information that can, that can be used to glean that, the assessor's records, the building permits, right, and DEP's records. I, 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 I'm happy that town council has signaled the building commissioner as the, as the point person to do this. I feel we should hire an independent consultant, I'm hoping that it's something that would fall under the purview of our board engineer, and then that fee would be paid by the applicant to come up with.
Mary, are you saying no physical count, you're just hiring a consultant to look over Board of Health records, assessor records, and figure out roughly what the count would be?
I think that should be part of it.
Well, what's the other part?
It, it, it sounds like town council wants a physical inspection.
Yes.
However, if the, if our town assessor, right, or our, our director of health, or our building commissioner can't use their badges to get into these homes, we're going to have to come up with some type of number. I've offered that opportunity, when this started off, I was the chair, I offered plenty of opportunity to the applicant to come up with that number. Now, it's gone out of control, because we heard the violation from a resident, not even you. So, you know, we're talking about comfort and confidence, well, that doesn't give me a lot of comfort and confidence, we'll get there, but now I, I think we should hire an independent consultant to manage this. Our staff is extremely busy, Town Hall.
That is very true.
And this is something that it, it, it's like catching up for years.
So what, what would you propose to be the scope of the consultant's work?
To confirm and certify the number of bedrooms.
By doing what?
I would do a review of the records that have to do with the permitting of the wastewater treatment facility in the Department of Health and with the DEP. Second piece is to, to audit the assessor's records and the building department's records.
What about the Board of Health?
Yes, the Board of Health. If your scope of work, if you want, because town council said it, and I don't disagree with him, that we, there should be a physical inspection.
Yes.
Let's do that as much as possible. But if the town cannot get access to these units, then we, we, we had better have a Plan B, a component of this audit of bedrooms that includes the review of records, that's all.
What say you about that?
I, I can't answer that tonight, I can't agree that we would pay for any of that. Our view is that this, there is no violation, that this condition at this point has been implicitly waived.
But has it been implicitly waived because nobody really knew what the bedroom count was? Isn't that the reason?
Madam Chair, may I, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record, this is Troy Miller with Southworth Development, and I just want to address the, the concern over, I, I understand the conversation as it relates to access to the individual homes, and understand the, the difficulty in that. I guess my biggest question would be, if this board believes that the concern here with the bedroom count is, is specifically in reference to these, the wastewater capacity, and the amount of data that we have to provide to the board showing that we have sufficient capacity, and that have been approved in the past, going back to the 2009, 2019 approvals that, that Jack has pointed out. What other, or what other reasons would the board have? What other, or what other reasons would the board have to understand the bedroom count other than the hard data on, on wastewater treatment?
I'll let Dennis answer that.
When they come and check it, they're checking for a three-bedroom home. Oh, that has the capacity. They leave, you put two more bedrooms. And say five, six more houses, but two more bedrooms. There's 12, 20 more bedrooms going into their septic system that they didn't count on. So, I mean, that's what I, I'm concerned with.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Dennis, I understand that. And Mike, but with us having real-time data on what our flows are on a regular basis and showing our capacity today, if that has been the case, we are still well below the capacity.
But you're not following the, the special permit, plain and simple.
Yes, sir, I understand, but, but I believe that the, the meaning and the reason for the bedroom count in the special permit is directly related to wastewater. And if you believe that there's other reasons for that, then I'm absolutely happy to hear them. But i- if the, if the reason is strictly wastewater, then that is where we believe in past applications, as it has been, has, has been approved by, by the board. And in this application, we have made all efforts to make sure that we continue to have the capacity necessary to, to service wastewater with any additional units that we have brought on. And so, it seems to me that if this is strictly a wastewater issue, then it should strictly be a DEP and Department of Health issue that we should be able to provide based on the data that is available.
So, what we should do though, too, is also another change in the special permit to add the bedrooms. That's what you should be coming to the board with at least, you know.
I'd like to expand on Dennis's answer.
Okay.
Hi Troy, it's Mary Wagan, and it has to do with zoning bylaw, Article 6, Section 174-24(c)(2), where this board needs to make a finding on the impacts of this development, okay? I never in my wildest dreams thought that Willow Bend was not in compliance with their special permit. I mean, your work in this town and special permits and your engineering plans and your applications have always been complete, and I always, it's, it's been always a joy to have you come in and work with us. You've, you've, you've even made significant changes to this plan. We're not done, right? And I'm not completely happy, you know that. But I never in my wildest dreams thought that this would be in such violation. And we're not talking like five, you know, units off. We're talking 17% or more. And it's all about the decisions that we make and the impacts of this town. And this, this is our bylaw, this is our law. We, this, this board cannot go forward and approve any modification to the special permit without making this finding. And at this point, I cannot make that finding without knowing how many bedrooms you have. That, for me, that's it. Why does bedrooms matter? Bedrooms matter because of the burden the people living in those bedrooms have on the town. You can tell me those bedrooms are, are all vacant, but I don't know if they're always going to be vacant. And anybody who lives on the Cape for the last 30, 40 years knows that there have been plenty of areas that bedrooms were empty almost year-round, and now they're all full. And if you look at our water and the Mashpee River and our closed ponds and all this, this, this invasive seaweed down in Self-Cape, which is not, I'm not saying this is all your fault, but you are expanding that wastewater to, Mr., Mr. No, I, I have the floor, Madam Chair.
I'm going to let him.
No, I have the floor, Karen. He cannot interrupt me. I'm sorry. I'd never let that happen to you. It's not so much that your wastewater treatment facility cleans down to a concentration of five units per gallon or whatever it is. It's that each bedroom adds to the load of nitrogen into our ecosystem. And that's why the number of bedrooms matter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, so, Madam Chair.
Yes, Troy.
So, so, understanding that they may not, I, I think that our data that shows when we are at peak capacity show that we are still well within the, the limits and the confines of what has been approved by DEP. So, when you talk about capacity of what's there today, I think we have very good data that shows what that looks like when it is full capacity. And again, I, I hear you talking about the stormwater, or excuse me, the wastewater component of this, which again, I feel like we have tremendous data for. And, and I guess that's where my question in the need for an inventory comes in versus the need for a, a check and balance, which I 100% agree with from a DEP perspective, to continue to maintain and understand that we do have the capacity to treat and utilize this system and treat wastewater from these units that are being added. So, that, that would be the only thing that I would ask of the board is to, to balance that question of, of the, the amount of time and effort to go get the exact bedroom counts versus looking at the data that has been, that has been compiled over a 30-year period and has been reviewed by DEP and third-party engineers repeatedly that shows that we are well within the, the limits of our system. And again, that system, the, the 853 plus whatever we may have above that is also, there's also the treatment of the 200 or so that are not within our community that we have added into that system as well, and still well below that capacity. So, I just want to make clear, we want to see that capacity utilized in order to make sure that we do not have more septic systems on the Cape that are leading to the issues that you're alluding to.
I understand what you're saying, Troy, but I think we are going to have to go with what we're saying here for several reasons. I agree, the capacity, you have the capacity there, you're not, you're not utilizing all your capacity. But we need to know what is really going on in terms of the bedroom count. You violated the special permit. And I'm not saying you knowingly did it, but it was a violation. And it could be a cut and dried no. But I'm not saying we're ready to do that now. We need to hear, you know, we need to go through those findings, each one of those findings, and we're not going to be able to do that. And I don't want to talk about the other part of this hearing, but we've got the Conservation, LEC Environmental Specialists, we're waiting to see what they say.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
I, I think I would say, you know, at, at this point, obviously, this has been helpful. I think we have very, you know, different views on, on this issue in terms of what it means and what the history of the project and the series of approvals by this board mean, and frankly, the very substantial economic reliance on these permits, not only by us but by all the other homeowners there. So, it's a very important issue. I, I agree with that. So, I would suggest that we continue both these matters for 30 days. We will, during that period, undertake, we will get you all the correspondence with DEP. We will bring Kevin Kline from, our wastewater engineer who's been on this project since 1990 and has been the liaison with DEP to, to talk about it. He's the, one of the most respected wastewater engineers for plants in the state. And we will, you know, share with you transparently what we have on the bedroom counts. But, you know, I, I would stress, you know, I, I don't think, I don't think anyone's capable of coming up, you know, with, with an exact number that's not going to change over time. It's, it's the, it's like any other neighborhood in Mashpee, as Dennis points out. We don't control the individual homes, nor do you control the individual homes. So, and we cannot guarantee access to those, but we can, you know, work with the, either assessors or building department. But again, our big picture view is, this is a, you know, not an issue that, that has great import because while every additional bedroom has some impact, we all acknowledge that, you know, DEP in its wastewater permit, which is where the 853 came from, that's, that's where that number came from. It didn't come out of, you know, thin air. You know, they, they, they review it each time, so. So, we would ask for 30-day continuance of both matters at this point.
Anyone else on the board wish to speak?
Madam Chair, I have one more if you don't mind.
I would like to speak, Madam Chair.
Yes, Troy.
I'm sorry, and I promise I'll keep it brief.
Please.
I, I just, in, in terms of the comment as it relates to being in violation of a special permit, I just, it, that, that doesn't feel quite right in its language to me simply because we have never done anything that has not been approved by this board. And so, we feel like we have taken the, the steps, gone through and provided all of this data every step of the way. So, in terms of violation, I just, I just don't, I, I just don't feel like that is a accurate representation of our position unless our is collectively between us and the town.
All right.
Yep, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we hire an independent counsel, which is paid for by the applicant under, I think it's Section 53G.
What is it?
I think it's Section 53G, but the planning board, to make, in order to make it determination, they can hire a consultant, which is paid for by the applicant. And I make a motion that we do so to determine what is the bedroom count of this project.
I just, one question. We hire that counsel, he tells us the bedroom count, and then where we go from there? Say, you can't build this?
But I've been asking, it's, right, but I've been asking for this information since April 2023. We've been, just asked for a continuance of 30 days. And I think we should just use this time, the planning board should find out the answer by itself. If you don't want to hire a consultant, we should delegate it, you know, to town staff to review the assessor's records, the building department records, and the Board of Health records to come up with a number. We have this public information, the town, the town can provide this information independent of the applicant.
The town can provide it, but the town is so stressed.
Right, and if, so if town, if town staff does not have the capacity, then I think that we should hire a consultant to do so. I, I would like the, the, our, our town engineer to do that. But I think we should go forward with securing those services, though in 30 days, we have a number.
Let's make a motion.
I'd like to, any other board members?
Do we have public comment?
Is there public comment?
Yeah, there will be public comment on this, yes.
Any other board members have before I make a motion?
Any board members wish to speak?
I, I do.
Yes.
I understand the wastewater treatment and the flows are currently well, well in the limits. The bedrooms are, from what I understand, in excess, excessive of the current limits as stated in the laws. We're focusing on wastewater and the impact on our ponds and, and waterways and, and pavements. Having an extra bedroom, and you have 287 units, and my guess on Cape Cod, there are probably more than a few extra bedrooms in those 800, uh, four, 287 units. I'd like the board to consider secondary impacts of having additional bedrooms and people on the Cape that are not permitted to be here, such as traffic flow, congestion, emergency vehicles. If you have a three-bedroom that's converted to five bedrooms, and you have five cars instead of three cars, emergency vehicles may be impeded. I'd just like second and tertiary things to be considered as well.
We want to entertain a motion?
Second.
Karen, just real quick, I heard some, just members of the audience.
Yeah, we have.
They, they.
Who would like to speak, come up, please?
I think we have a motion on the floor, and I don't think this, this public comment would.
I just wanted to clarify for the folks that we're not continuing or closing the hearing. They're, they're making a motion on, on whether or not to procure a consultant for a particular purpose.
Yeah.
There's not, you will be heard.
We're not deliberating, really, we're just.
Just one question for the board as you consider the motion made.
I think there's an important issue that needs to be addressed here, not to the existing homeowners that have.
Dan, Dan, you're going to be, have an opportunity to speak. One second. I lost my train of thought.
You, so we're, we have a motion on the floor to hire an independent consultant?
Yes, so, my, the point I wanted to raise is that staff, whether or not we procure a consultant or not, is going to have to prepare the records. It's going to be a substantial amount of work with or without a consultant. So, I would just suggest that I have an opportunity to discuss this matter with the town manager prior to deciding on procuring a consultant and come back to you with a mobilization plan of staff within the next couple of weeks after we discuss the matter with the town manager because it is going to take staff time for multiple departments regardless. And I, I would like the opportunity to address that capacity limitation with him.
That makes sense.
Before a firm decision relative to procuring the consultant is made.
So, I like that idea, and so I'll have to rescind my second, so I rescind my second.
Yes.
And give Evan some time.
Okay, so, I'd like to withdraw my motion and make a new motion.
Right.
Okay, so I make a motion to direct town staff, including the town manager and the town planner, to develop a plan to certify the number of bedrooms at this project.
Second.
Any discussion, other discussion? None, hearing none? How many say yes?
Aye.
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 No.
Aye. So, passes.
Four, one, thank you.
Okay, passes.
Now, public comment, Madam Chair.
If she, if she wants, if she, if she's done with board members.
Madam Chair, can I just?
Comment, yes, yes.
I think you're taking an incredibly important view of this, as you should, because it's one of the biggest communities in town. It's important to understand the scope of what they're asking, and I understand that. You also, just by listening to this, understand this is not an easy thing to accomplish. You can look at the assessor's records and add the number of bedrooms that way and get a decent representation, not a complete one. You, you can ask for every homeowner to open their door, and you won't get all of them. So, you still won't get a complete one. So, you're still going to be at that point that Dennis mentioned a moment ago that, okay, once you get the number, let's say it's 900-something, now what do you do? So, we're going to think about that next step. You had another board member mentioning, okay, the additional bedrooms are already here, by the way. Obviously, you already know that. Additional bedrooms have other secondary impacts, traffic and so on. DEP has permitted the treatment plant for a certain volume of wastewater, which can translate into an estimated volume, number of bedrooms.
Right.
Plus square footages of restaurants, at the clubhouse, and so on and so on, square footages of other spaces. I, I wasn't aware that you did Cotuit Bay Common, Cotuit Bay condos, I wasn't aware of that in the history. That, that's also a good thing, certainly for the environment, the head of the bay there. So, once you get to that point, I, I think, and you are certainly wise to speak to town council, you're going to have to think about what your next step should be because you're certainly not going to ask, and I, and I'm sure that you want to tell the homeowners here, the people that have the extra 100 bedrooms to leave or to remove their homes, that's not going to happen. So, I, I just think it needs to be, you need to understand the scope of the magnitude of the, of the exceedance of the 28, the 287 units is not exceeded, but the, the, I'm sorry.
Eighteen, fifteen.
53 bedrooms. So, how many more there is, so you know what you're being asked to do. And then find out, I think the applicants, coming upon the applicant to give you a good estimate on what DEP's approved, so we have a clue what they think the number is.
And match it up with these other records.
And match it, right, and you'll get, you'll get a reasonable estimate, not a, not a, not 100% perfect, but a reasonable estimate. but a reasonable estimate on what that exceedance of bedrooms is. And then you can see how big the magnitude of the problem is and how to perhaps manage it with the wastewater treatment plant permit and any future development, any future development on the site.
I think I'd echo Ed's comments, and I want to make very, very clear. I've analyzed the assessor's data, and my count is 995 bedrooms. That's the planner's estimate using the best available data.
I mean, that's incredible that he even spent the time to do all that. And, and I'd want to do it twice to make sure his numbers were right, right?
Can you give me that number again?
993.
995.
995, sorry.
Because that's public records, so anybody in this room could have done that.
That's right.
That's 142 bedrooms, excess bedrooms.
The assessor's records, bill, the department's record are public, the department of health records are public, and so on, the DEP records. So this is, this is adding, it's, this is arithmetic. It is some research, but it's arithmetic. And I'm confident that we can, we can come up with a number that will lead the planning board in a direction that they can make a decision. Okay?
Thank you.
So, we take a vote?
I would suggest that, you know, there are many people in the room interested in, in hearing the matter, so if there's no other comments or questions from the board or from the applicants, I would go to the public.
Yeah, we're, we're already late for the third public hearing. We'll continue the third public hearing, the Malignie Public Hearing until.
8:20.
8:20.
And you still have the public hearing continued from the 710 public hearing? You continued that to 7:30, I believe? You'll need to push that out later.
That hasn't been.
Unless you'd like to continue that to a date certain in the future now, if the applicant agrees.
I think we should, 520, is it 523?
Yes, 532, excuse me.
They've asked for a continuance. I think we should just get, do that right now, quick.
Yeah.
For ball to them?
The first one was already continued. Well, no, it was said.
We have a confusing number of proceedings here. So you opened the 710 public hearing at the request of the applicant. You continued that to 7:30, with, their hope was to resolve the bedroom matter tonight and withdraw the Cranberry Point matter. Now that, it is, the board's seemingly indicating that they're not gonna take action on petition two, we'll call it, the bedroom issue. You need to reopen the 710 public hearing and either.
Continue it.
Continue it to a future date if the applicant would agree.
Okay.
And then you move on to the Malignie hearing and presumably accept that as well.
We'll reopen the public hearing on 275 for the 12-unit build.
I make a motion, we continue that in 30 days. What's the?
Well, the first meeting.
July 19?
In August is probably the.
August 2nd is the first meeting.
Otherwise, you'd be at the second meeting in July.
Is the project proponent okay with that day?
When is it?
August 2nd, 710.
August 2nd, that's 710.
Madam Chair, would you check at the project proponent?
I'm looking at the schedule right here. August 2nd, 710 for 275, 12-unit. Okay? And the same.
We also have July 19th.
Do we have to continue that one? Or we're gonna close that one?
Say that again, Dennis, please?
The one we were just on, the one, the bedroom count.
All right, so.
I think there are people here that want to comment.
That's right. So these are all still open. You need to continue presumably the 275 quintiquisit matter. And also, you'll need to review the request to continue the 532 Main Street public hearing. That will, and then you'll need to allow the public to offer their comment on the bedroom cap issue. So I would suggest that you decide on a date to continue the 275 quintiquisit Cranberry Point project to a date certain in the future, August 2nd or some other date, if the applicant agrees. And also entertain the request to continue the Malignie hearing to the same date.
We can't do that until we complete the 853.
No, well, that hearing is open. You, instead of continuing till 9 o'clock or 9:50.
I made a motion, we continue that one.
The Malignie hearing.
Malignie hearing, just 8:30.
So move, I mean, whatever second.
Okay. Any, any discussion?
Okay, now you ask the people to discuss.
That'll work.
How many say aye?
Aye.
No, I think it's stay down.
Aye, Mary. Continue. Aye, okay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so 856, 853 is still open, public comment. Who wants to come up? Yes, sir.
I do. Come first. Are we doing on the bedroom count? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Wendy Williams, Simon's Narrows Road. I'm told that I'm not supposed to present my credentials anymore, so I won't, but you all know who I am. First of all, I would like to thank Mary Wagon. I'd like to acknowledge her depth of information, her experience, and her perspicacity, because were it not for Mary Wagon spending her Saturdays reading, none of us would know anything about this. I thank her, she's a wonderful member of the planning board. I made some notes. What the DEP agreed to or didn't agree to is completely irrelevant to us. I'm tired of hearing about that. Every time someone complains from the town, someone says, well, that guy said it was okay, and that guy said it was okay. It's like hearing mommy, daddy said I could do it. No one knows exactly how many bedrooms there are. And here's the reason. If you'll remember, the last time I was here, I commented that I looked at their advert for selling 14 units on five acres of land. What are they thinking? And it said three bedrooms, but you could also have a fourth. So that's why we don't know, and that's why we need someone to physically visit each and every one of these houses. Regarding the sewer, this is difficult for me to talk about, and I don't even know if it's morally right. But Ray Jack was very concerned about the operation of that sewer. He did not think it was working well. And it was my understanding that it was going to eventually tie into our town sewer. So I don't know if I should even have offered that information, because he told me that when I was talking to him. But that's just a piece of information that he had. And for those of you who don't know, we don't have beloved Ray with us anymore. What a loss to the town. Willabend here can choose to be an environmental hero or environmental curmudgeon. The last time I was here, I suggested two things. I personally want them to have the 12 units. We owe them. Sure, why not? We agreed to it. Y'all can have that if you want it. But what are you gonna give back to us? What I suggest they give back to us are those five acres. Everyone goes home happy. You give us the five acres, there's other land elsewhere that you own where you can build those 12 units, and then the negotiation happens about the bedrooms, blah, blah, blah. But that would be a simple way to ease all of this pain. Or, if they don't want to do that, someone else has suggested, and I don't have permission to use his name, but y'all know him, that their commitment, and on paper, serious commitment, to clean up the entirety of Quaker Run, not just 20% of it, but the entirety of it. And so it would be worked out as a legal agreement, we'll do this by this and this by this. I think that would also soothe the town's anxiety and fear here. Or, we might ask Willabend, what else do they want to do? You know? Make a suggestion to us. Those are my suggestions, and remember, I'm not anybody, I'm just me. Those are just my suggestions, but maybe Willabend could come forward and offer us something of equal or greater value that would make this board and the town feel more comfortable with allowing them to somehow or other get by on the bedroom thing. Thank you, Mr. Hanson, for mentioning that the bedroom thing isn't just about nitrogen. That is about a lot of other things, too. I live in that neighborhood, and the traffic there is burdened. One last comment. What I've wondered is, why is so much going on over at Willabend right now? Why is all this happening? So of course, being me, I did some research. And I have here to hand out to you an article from the Globe, which will help explain to you a little bit what's going on here. If you'll remember, I do, because I lived there, this property was owned by someone whose name I don't even remember, way back when. And he was gonna develop it, and he went under. The land was sold at auction, and it was sold to our friend at Reebok. What's his name? I forget. Paul Fireman. And Paul Fireman seemed to be a good steward. He seemed to care about the land, and he was good to the town. Then David Southworth jumped in, and he became a partner. So what happened about two years ago, back in 2020, is that there was some kind of conflict between David Southbrook and Joe Deitch. Joe Deitch is the current head of this project. Who is he? I don't know. He's a gazillionaire. He's a, he was born and bred in Boston, and he's a gazillionaire. I don't know, he's got billions, whatever. After you get 1 billion, I don't remember the numbers. But now he just took control of it in 2020 during the pandemic, so we didn't really notice it. And I think, I can say this because I'm not testifying, I think what he wants to do is get as much money out of this property as possible. That doesn't mean it's nefarious. That doesn't mean he's doing anything wrong. But suddenly, there's this push, push, push. And so the back and forth that we used to have from Willabend, the back and forth that you enjoyed, Dennis, with Willabend in the past, isn't here now, because this man makes lots of money. Doesn't mean he's a bad person. Apparently, he also puts on plays in New York, I don't know. But his goal is to clean this up and get it moving. So that's all I have to say, and I'm gonna give you guys all copies of the Globe story, and you can take it home as a favor from me. This is today's meeting.
Thank you. I like it right there.
Why not? First turn.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Next speaker.
Pardon? Recording secretary needs one, two.
Oh, oh, you do? Okay. Come up. Say your name and your address.
Yes, I guess. My name's Clayton Southworth, 203 Willabend Drive. So yes, that's my dad that you were referring to, David Southworth. Just to clarify the connections. I always believe in disclosures, that's a good thing to have. So, this is kind of an odd situation that we have going on. And, you know, things evolve the way they do, and it's always interesting. And context really matters. And what's interesting is how much I agree with you guys. So first, let's find the commonalities, because just firing at each other is never healthy. I want the cleanest water to drink. I want to be healthy. I want a healthy environment. I'm thankful for how much of Mashpee's been protected with conservation lands and everything else. So there's a lot of ways in which we connect, and we're happy, and we're good stewards of the land, and there's been many wonderful things. Yes, Paul Fireman was a wonderful steward of it. My dad loves this place more than you guys will ever know. My family does, too. You know, so this is our home. You know, so you're stuck with me. But, so, while I say all that, and it's all very true, working with people is something that I've learned is so valuable. So when you work with people to get better outcomes, you get the best results. When you fight, at the end of it, you're just left with a bruise. Nothing really good happens. You know, so I think, I think that should be noted, and that should be acknowledged. And, you know, us working with you to have better sewers, to really take care of the environment, to do all that type of stuff. You know, I mean, I know he's a billionaire, Joe Deitch, but you guys don't know him like I do. And while he is a billionaire, he's also kind of crunchy. He loves the environment. You know, he loves all that type of stuff. So him doing philanthropic missions with his money to protect the environment is something he'd be open to. But, you know, hopefully, he'll be given the opportunity to show that. And so, look, I'm not gonna come here and fire any crazy things off. But I am gonna say, working together is a lot more better for the environment, and better for us, and better for our health, and better for our community than sending agents after Willabend would ever be. So I just hope for the best for everyone, and I really do love this town and the people in it. And that's the best way that we can have success. But we're not gonna have success by doing it the other way. So I thank you for your time, and like I said, I hope the best for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for taking my discussion. I'm Dr. Stephen Ross, and I'm one of the newest residents of Mashpee. I just moved here June 1st, 8 Regatta Drive. I've been vacationing here for the last 20 years, and I am a member at Willabend. One of the things that we did recently is purchased some land on Willabend, because we wanted to, we have a little larger home, because we have a little small house that doesn't, won't be big enough for grandchildren when they come. And we've, and we've enjoyed the community very, very much, and we look forward to having a very productive and active place here and becoming active in some of your boards. One of the things I just wanted to point out, I know you've been talking about numbers, okay? And the numbers of bedrooms are related to the flow of water that has to be purified. And I think everybody wants clean water. Everyone wants the same thing, really. It's just a matter of finding the balance. So, just doing a little calculation, if we pick the number, say 1,000 beds, and you say 65% capacity, right now it can go to 85% capacity. That's a 25% difference. That means if the system is working appropriately, you can increase the 1,000 beds by 25% to 1,250 and still have an efficient system. So I'm just throwing those numbers out so that if we talk about a bed situation, we talk about a purification situation, we're, we're on the same wavelength. So I'm looking forward to living here, to working with you all, to becoming active in the community, and I hope that we come to a nice solution that's common sense and practical and peaceful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have peripheral vision. Terry Ronhock, 104 DeGrasse Road. So I, I am listening to all of this. I kind of liken this to, I worked in mortgage application for a while, liken it to having a credit, a credit limit on a card, this number of bedrooms. So if I went for an application for a loan, and I had a $5,000 credit limit on a credit card, even though I only used 130 of it, or maybe I only had a, you know, $1,000 balance, but I had the potential for 5,000, then the bank is going to consider that 5,000. And, and that's the same thing, I think, when we look at the bedroom numbers here. So even though the flow for the, that's coming through that septic system right now is only at, you know, 80,000 gallons during the peak, but, you know, but the potential is there, the potential when you look at the bedrooms. I think that has to be considered, even though the flow rate now is, is this number. But the bedroom limit is going to have a potential. The potential could be maxing that or coming to that 80%. The other thing is, I wanted to point out is that, that we are, it is important for us all to get along, and certainly the people that live here, and the boards. But it's also about the laws. And the law, the special permit, was for this bedroom count. And we're looking at, you know, sewer capacity, but the permit was for a specific number of bedrooms. And that doesn't just reflect on the, the septic treatment for those bedrooms. It reflects on other things, you know, like comments were made about traffic. And, you know, I've made a couple of comments about, also about untreated. You know, I, I worked in Bridgewater for a while, and that was something that was being tested a lot there. Runoff from, you know, you know, treating of parking lots and, and roofs. And that water's not, that's being put into the, into the groundwater. That's not being treated. So, but I really appreciate that, all the work that this board has done and continues to do to protect our community and work with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ronhock.
My name is Deanne Masters.
My name is Deion Masters, 31 North Glen in Willabend. I apologize for speaking out of turn earlier. I'm just here to speak to the situation that for the people that own lots in Willabend right now, as we sit here, and we're sitting here talking about all these restrictions in the bedrooms, where is our protection? Something that was done through no fault of our own. Now we're subject to this limitation in bedrooms. And also, there's another situation pertaining to ourselves is that we own, we don't own the lot. We own the development rights. And they do expire at a certain time. So now I'm caught between a rock and a hard place, right? I have to develop this lot by a certain time, but now we have this situation. I can't do anything until it's resolved. So where is our protection? And what would the planning board say to that situation? And what would you do for protection of the existing homeowners who have done nothing wrong? And now you're talking about people that may have added bedrooms and all of that. So I just want you to consider that situation and what you would do to protect us as well.
I thought about that.
Thank you. We're not going to have a dialogue here, but thank you for your public comment. We are definitely going to look at that.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's all I ask. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Arden Russell, 32 Sturgis Lane. The real issue here is that the developer purposefully ignored the terms of the special permit that the planning board issued them. They've ignored the conditions that our community put into place as small protections, including bedrooms, which, as Mr. Hanson said, have so many more reasons than just sewage treatment flow. What they've done is they've stomped all over us. And they said, who cares what this permit says? We're going to do whatever we want anyway. And now that they've been caught violating the terms of the special permit, and it is a violation of the terms of the special permit, instead of being contrite and instead of seeking forgiveness after the fact or suggesting potential reparations or mitigation for their egregious behavior, no, instead, they showed up and asked for more. This is a very serious violation, and I really hope that you treat it as such. What are the options for, what options for resolutions are being discussed? I know that's going to come later, once you determine what the actual violations are. Immediate halting or revocation of building permits and occupancy permits, perhaps? But certainly, denial of any additional requests for anything has to be immediately implemented. This developer has showed us that they cannot be trusted. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Teresa McDonald, 11 Cranberry Ridge Road. I have been living in Mashpee for 17 years now. My property directly abuts Willabend. We went through, I don't know how many meetings, discussing the development of the condos behind my property off of Simon's Road. It just seems that no matter how much we give Willabend permission to amend their special permit, they just keep expanding. At what point do we say, you've expanded enough? Do we let them max out their sewer system? Do we let them max out the land? At what point is Mashpee going to say, enough is enough? You're big enough. You're taking up enough room. There's enough houses. There's enough bedrooms. There's enough flow going into our waters. It's time to say enough. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
One more. Anyone else? Okay. So I guess we're going to continue. Pardon?
We're going to continue the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll continue the 853-bedroom public hearing till, along with the 275, 12-unit hearing, to one particular date. Would that be August 2nd?
August 2nd, and we could do this one at 7:30.
We'll do one at 7:10 and this one at 7:20.
7:20.
Which one is 7:10?
7:10 on the 12-unit and 7:20 for the 853 bedrooms.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So we've asked, we made a motion. We've asked staff to come up with a plan, right?
Yeah.
How will we discuss that? Can that just be on, can that be a regular agenda item for the next meeting?
Yep.
I was thinking.
Well, I want to be cautious that my update to you relative to the plan doesn't, you know, result in any deliberations relative to the merits of it or issues you've identified with the proposal.
Should we authorize the chair to approve the plan, the work plan? Do you want to do that?
Don't mind that.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid we might, if, I'd like to get working on that stuff, right? But I'm, our next meeting is when?
Well, it's right before July.
July 5th, right?
Mm-hmm.
If this wasn't a public hearing, right? We would have that item on July 5th, would discuss it, would go forward with it. But it is a public hearing. And now that, now that we're talking about continuing this to August.
We could continue the hearing to that date, just so I could provide the update if the applicant's willing to accept that.
Continue this matter till that date?
Till July 5th at 7:10.
For the purposes of.
For the purpose of discussing a work plan to determine the number of bedrooms.
July 5th?
Mm-hmm.
And that would, that does make sense because if there's an opportunity, if there's an issue or an opportunity identified in the next two weeks, I'll have the opportunity to discuss that.
Okay, so we're talking about the one that we set for 7:20. We're going to set it for July 5th.
At 7:10.
Okay, so it's, so 7:20 is out for August 2nd.
Yeah, well, and I think, yeah, we'll reevaluate the next hearing date thereafter. But I think it is wise. I prefer not to provide that report outside of the confines of the public hearing notice.
So a public hearing on the matter of whether we should get a consultant or we should.
I think it has to be a regular public hearing with the intent of setting a consultant to approving a work plan to determine the number of bedrooms.
Approving a, okay. Make a motion, Dennis.
Shall be.
Any second.
I second that for 7:10 on July 5th.
How do you vote?
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
No, I think, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Okay, so now we're past the Milagney.
Madam Chair, you have taken a motion and voted to continue the Cranberry Point matter?
We continue the Cranberry Point.
To 7:10 on August 2nd.
August.
Yeah. Cranberry Point, right. Okay.
Now we open the public hearing.
All right.
Open to 7:20.
7:20, it's already a little late.
We have movement to 7:45.
Shall we move it to, or leave it at this? Can we just start?
No, we can.
What's your intention?
We're doing Milagney now, public hearing.
You need to reopen. You've already opened the public hearing.
But I continue to.
It was open for 7:20.
But I continue to.
8:30.
No, yeah, about 8:45.
Reopen, reopen the public hearing.
To continue it at 8:45.
That would take long with the.
We're, oh, you've continued it till 8:45?
Yes.
Okay, well, you can wait a few minutes.
We can do some other things on that.
Yeah, let's, okay. So we have to vote on that?
Can we take a recess? Madam Chair, when you go, when you go through this process of just moving the agenda around, I would recommend in the future that, like, for instance, the first hearing they asked to just put aside so that you could discuss this whole bedroom count, just vote to approve, to continue it until the next matter is complete. Don't put a time.
Oh, that's a good idea.
You have to, you have to do a time.
Not, not at the beginning. At the beginning, you have to. At the beginning, you open it up, you open the hearing, and you continue. Vote to continue until the matter is, I've never been to another board or commission where you have to pick another time in the middle of that night that you have to continue it to.
Only at the beginning.
Not process. Confirm that with town council if you want. It would just make it simpler for you.
It would.
Easier for you.
Yes, it would.
Just confirm with town council.
Can we take a break?
Okay. Five minutes.
You have enough trouble trying to keep it straight.
Yeah.
Now you wouldn't have to do that.
That's good work. That would be good.
Keep it to grow.
It's not, yeah. Right. Yeah. No, they always, they told me. Catch that time and say, motion to continue. It's too much to. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Exactly. Yeah, I mean, I never, I never practiced this area before.
That's right. You just have to open up the hearing. You can't open up the hearing before the.
Yes.
After that.
Yeah, I know, I started to do that before. I want to get going.
And once you get it open.
Yeah.
We're not going to vote to delay it.
Just let it go, let it roll.
You just got to start it before.
Then what do you say if you pass the time?
So if you never opened it.
Yeah, never opened it.
Right, you never opened it. Now you're past the time.
This is the second.
You're past the time. You just say, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to open this hearing after we're done with business on this. You just can't open it before that advertised. Just check the town council.
Yeah, okay.
You're doing well, checking the town council with this.
Yeah.
Great idea if you could do it. It was 10 houses, I would love it.
Yeah.
Just never going to happen. Because if some people are going to say.
He was adding.
You know what, Ed? If they answered the question in the beginning, I would have never questioned them. So shame on them.
Yeah. Well, I guess the best way is you check the assessors, you check the BOH and the building.
Assessors obviously, the board helps.
Yeah.
Should the assessor records have really good evidence that you just got to know which ones to look for?
Town council was opinioned it was not.
It will not be, but there's not a better way of them counting.
The six units they built there, the circle there, did they, yeah. Did that count the bedrooms? Have they counted that into the eight other? Okay, so that's about.
So like this room, the unit.
I can't believe, though, over the years, I could have sworn, terrible. He was concerned about. No, but they knew. They're pretty smart.
Except when you say, oh, how many, how many better? Oh, I don't know. And then you say, say, I. You would, if you were their engineer, you would have given me a number. You were their engineer, you would have given me their number, a number. And you would have said, it might be off by 1%, and that would have been fine. Do you know what I mean? It's like. There's ways to answer that question. And transparency builds trust.
It was, it was slightly awkward.
But we did the right thing, continuing it.
Oh, yeah. Uh, well, yes, yeah, well.
In that respect, we didn't mention on the bedroom. They wanted to continue both that.
I think so. I think, I mean, I think that was the intent. I couldn't, I couldn't fathom they'd want to withdraw. Have you voted, voted on it yet or otherwise withdrawn? I think you're right.
Okay, ready to resume. Jay, the time has arrived. It's eight quarter to nine, 8:45. Public hearing number three, Marcello Milagney, Forestale Road. Public hearing notice. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81T, and the Mashpee Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 6, 2022, at 7:20 PM in the Quay Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Grayneck Road North, to consider an application by Marcello Milagney of 80 Airport Road, Hyannis, Mass, for approval of nine-lot definitive subdivision of land consisting of approximately 18.05 acres located on Main Street, Route 130, between Nicoletta's Way and Echo Road and identified on the Mashpee Assessors' Maps as Map 26 Block 6. This lot proposed for subdivision is within the C3 Limited Commercial District, the I1 Industrial District, and the R5 Residential District. Plans may be reviewed in the Office of the Town Clerk or Town Planner at Mashpee Town Hall, submitted by John Filone Chair, March 11th and March 18th, 2022. We have, let's see. The agenda, application, applicant is Marcello Milagney, Forestale Road LLC. Location, 532 Main Street, Map 26 Block 6. His request, the applicant requests consideration for approval of a nine-lot definitive subdivision plan of land consisting of approximately 18 acres, 18.505 acres located on Main Street, Route 130, between Nicoletta's Way and Echo Road. We have a letter here from Mr. Corain, his counsel, dated May 9, 2023. It was addressed to Chairwoman Wagon. As you are aware, this office represents Forestale Road LLC in its application to approve a definitive subdivision plan. We received an update on May 8, 2023, that the data collection was completed last week by the company preparing the traffic assessment, but they still need time.
I think you have a new letter.
Thank you, you have a new one. It's June 16th is the date. Dare Chairwoman Faulkner, things change. As you are aware, as I've already read that, we've been advised that a draft traffic report will be completed within the next two to three weeks. Given that, I would ask that the hearing on the subdivision plan be continued from June 21, 2023, to August 2, 2023. I would also request that the board grant a further 120-day extension of the timeframe for issuing its decision. Thank you for your courtesies in this regard, very truly yours, Christopher J. Corain. So.
We have a public hearing on August 2nd?
August 2nd.
At 7:10. We'll probably have a second one at 7:20. I make a motion that we continue this public hearing and provide that 120-day. I make a motion that we continue this public hearing and provide that 120-day extension. And the public hearing would be on August 2 at 7:30.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. How many say aye?
Aye.
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 Nye?
Was that a nye or an i?
That was an i.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Get the wax out of my ass.
Are you publishing something to the town clerk on that?
For the extension, you need to file a certificate of action per se.
When does that have to be filed?
I'll, I'll file it. It's just, it acknowledges that the writing, the request to extend was made in writing and accepted by the board. That's what I will be filing with the clerk.
All right. All right. Okay, we signed that Barnstable County Registry of Deeds signatory page. I think we have Chad Smith now. Chad Smith, Chairman of the Sewer Commission, who's speaking on, let's cut out the word and discussion. It's an update with Chad Smith, Sewer Commission Chair, relative to the upcoming August 11, 2023 deadline for state revolving funds application to Mass DEP.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, it's good to see you all. This is going to be a very different conversation than I initially anticipated. It was a devastating blow to lose Mr. Ray Jack. The support from likely and unlikely sources has been immediate. We have surged to try and pick up the, the burden that he left and none of us are town engineers, excuse me, none of us are civil engineers. I have stepped in to be the center for communications for the town and the town manager's office has picked up the day-to-day funding and those duties as well. What we have done is we wrapped all the considerations into one, one effort, one group team effort that we're surging ahead with. Monday night at the select board, we will introduce our plan to proceed to both potentially address SRF funds in this year, also our plan to keep this project rolling without Mr. Ray Jack's guidance. I would like to tell you more, but we are still working on it. There's more work I have to do, more work the town manager's office has to do with all their free time. And we do plan to be ready Monday night to present the entire scope of what we're going to do. It will not be easy. I speak tonight only for myself as the chair. I have not convened our commission since Ray Jack's passing. This was done in emergency mode and I'm extremely impressed with the support of the town manager's office and the Mashpee enterprise. They have stepped in to, Mackenzie Ryan met with me today and she has been invaluable in our outreach efforts, which is an ongoing part of this effort that we are trying to reach people to help them understand what to expect when they get a green stake in the ground and what proceeds from there. If the chair recognizes and desires, I'm happy to take questions.
I think in deference to the select board, Chad, we'll let them handle it on Monday and actually, I guess at that point you can start taking questions after they speak.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair.
I don't want to step on the select board's toes.
And that's why we have ideas and we have well-developed ideas. They need finalization and the appropriate, I agree with the Madam Chair and so is the town manager, it's the appropriate thing to do to go to the select board first.
Right. Thank you very much, Chad, for coming in and I hope this, you know, gets everybody a little calmer in this matter because there's been a lot of chatter about this. I think we're going to do the right thing.
And I think for those that are concerned, a great meeting to watch, you don't have to watch the whole thing, was our previous meeting where we had a contractor come in. I won't identify him at risk of favoring one contractor over the other, but gave a thorough explanation of what to expect. And in essence, everybody can breathe a sigh of relief when they see the stake, that's when they call a contractor to come look at it. They can get multiple estimates, which I would recommend. And the contractor that they select will place the stake and you will have time to get it done. It's not an emergency. It's not, there is the ability to give extensions. Right now, it's a 90-day period. We are, I am going to beseech the commission to extend that, that base amount of time. So we want to give everyone the reassurance and basically say, relax for now. When you see that stake, that's when you can make the call. You will have time to get the work done and we know this is already a burden on households, but we have to do it. So we will never be heavy-handed as long as I'm the chairman.
Thank you very much, Chad.
Thank you.
Karen, can I ask Chad a question while he's here?
Pardon me?
Can I ask Chad a quick, quick question while he's here?
Go ahead.
I get, especially after Ray's passing and certainly before, my office gets numerous phone calls relative to the sewer system and I direct them to the best available information that we have. One question I had recently was from a gentleman who had just moved here. He's in Phase 1 of sewer service area. I think some road construction happened along his street already. I think they had cut and patched the pavement and he had, his stake had shown up and he was concerned that he missed his opportunity to move the stake. And so, because the, you know, the, the road had obviously had a stick gone in it and had been patched. Am I hearing you correctly that just be, if the stake is in the ground and roadwork has occurred in front of your home, that is not constituted the last opportunity for you to meet your contractor and place the stake appropriately?
I do not believe so, but I would like to find out and I can get that to you.
That's a question I get relatively frequently, so I'd like to be able to answer it appropriately.
That's, I will look into it and get back to you. I want people to have the right information and you can always direct anyone to come to my personal email or my phone.
That's what I'll do.
And, you know, there'll be, there'll be a better person in this seat hopefully soon. But for now, we're going to do our best and I've got the support I need.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, old business, discuss planning board priorities to bring to the Charter Review Committee. How many of our board members read the charter? Anybody?
Yeah.
How many went to the charter meeting or saw it on television?
I was on the previous charter review, so I own it.
All right. Well, does anybody have any thoughts about any changes or whether you want to keep things or is anybody familiar with it enough? I watched it on television, so I have some ideas. Do you have any ideas?
I didn't watch it, so I don't have any ideas yet.
Did you read it?
Yet.
No.
Not yet.
Anybody, anybody on the board want to speak?
I already made my idea.
You have an idea?
Yeah, so, so the, so the one idea that I've already brought to the Charter Review Committee from this board is that there'd be some flexibility with respect to appointments in the case of how I, and how I expressed it to them, the Charter Review Committee, in the case of long-term vacancies of six months, that the board of selectmen could appoint elected officials to fill those seats. So at first, at first I discussed about just not excluding elected officials from being, sitting on appointed boards. That didn't go over well, so I, I offered a compromise, well, what if there's a vacancy of six months? And they were, they were thinking, because right now, there's not, there's not those long-term vacancies, but like 15 years ago, there was. There were some boards that couldn't even function. So they were, they were amenable to putting in something like that, some type of language so that elected officials could be appointed to appointed boards if there were chronic vacancies. So that was one thing. So anyways, so you have more ideas? Go ahead, Karen.
Well, I, I think we should have a maximum of two terms for elected officials. I mean, you could think about having like a period of three years after the two terms, say you're reelected twice, the three years are blank, you're out and you could come back later, but not, not, you know, three, six.
Are you speaking to me?
Oh, shit.
No, it's nothing personal, Dennis. Actually, I.
There's an exception if your initials are DB.
That kind of makes me feel like I should change my mind.
Or maybe MEW.
But I don't think we should limit the town clerk's term to two terms. I think that is a kind of a special job that in this particular case, Debbie Kay has great expertise. I know she'll be leaving, so it's sort of somebody that has to come up behind her. We have to think about how that's going to be because we don't want, we want a smooth transition. As she said, she answers to the people of Mashpee and not to the select board and I like that.
I like that.
Because that's, that's who she does answer to. Then the other thing I heard last night about the town manager, where he should live, he seems to think we, he should live in Mashpee. And Mary made some good points about, well, what if you don't live in Mashpee right now? Let's say you live 20 or 30 miles away, but you can't move because your kids are in a school that would totally disrupt them or you're a caretaker. We really have to think about that, you know? And then maybe you can't even get a place in Mashpee maybe because there's no house to buy. So it's, it's very complicated. I don't see in terms of a town manager why there would be any exigent circumstances which would require him to absolutely live in Mashpee. Police and fire, somebody has to be on a scene right away. That's different. Town manager, he, he can pick up the phone and say, I'll be there. What do you want to know? I'll help you. But he doesn't have to be physically present, I don't think, immediately. That's, that's just my thinking. And that's enough. Okay, next issue, old business, Declaration of Default, Akway Highlands Tripartite Agreement, dated March 20, 2019. Evan, you have an, Ed, you have an update on that?
Yes. For everyone's update, we've been to the site several times in the last couple of weeks. I'll cut right to the chase. We're paving tomorrow. So the final paving on the entire subdivision will be conducted tomorrow. We've met with Mr. Moran and with his contractor from Lawrence Lynch, his supervising contractor from Lawrence Lynch, several times. I met with them again yesterday. We altered a couple of things to make sure that the drainage would be successful out there, that the way that the grading would be done with the final pavement would be done in a manner where the catch basins would be positioned correctly. Because of the concern that we have at the end of the subdivision near the Dorsey family, I'll just use that as an example, that end, we've actually recommended last week that an additional catch basin be, a small catch basin drop inlet be installed and piped to one of the existing catch basins as there, just so the water gets away, so that all the water that's generated on the subdivision property, subdivision road property, subdivision road area gets directed to the subdivision drainage system.
Okay.
And that's what's being done. So as this afternoon, that additional grate and inlet was being installed by Mr. Moran's team. So I went over to inspect it again and on the way here to visit Evan and Karen Leslie, he sent me more pictures that, you know, about with the completion. So tomorrow morning at 0700, they're going to be there. I was concerned last week about notification to the butters, notification to the owners. I saw an email this week from Mr. Moran to his, you know, neighbors, his, his clients, essentially, the owners there, notifying them of this particular upcoming event. Lawrence Lynch's supervisor and I talked about, well, what if it doesn't get to some people? What are we doing here? So they're, they're, this is not their first time figuring that out. So what their intent is, is twofold. The first is to put down what's called a tack coat. It's a asphalt emulsion oil so that the final coat and the original binder coat have, have a.
Adhesion.
Adhesion, correct. Have something to, to stick to. They'll be tack coating entire carriage road, so between Blue Castle and the grass will all be shut down. There'll be no traffic and it'll all get paved at once. Then we go to Blue Castle, they will only shut down one lane, tack coat one lane, pave one lane, wait for that to cure and cool, then open that up to traffic because the people like on the Darcy, the Darcy family side of the, of the road, Dorsey, excuse me, side of the road, you know, there's others that could go in and out and wouldn't know about this paving going on. And we wouldn't want them to travel on carriage road right away either. So again, he's going to pave one lane of Blue Castle, shut off traffic to only one lane, keep one lane open, then they will wait for that to cure and cool for a couple of hours, then move to the other lane, open up the newly paved lane and let that be used. And so it'll all be done tomorrow.
Is that definite now?
It is definite now.
Thank God. Jeez.
Right. So I, I have an inspector on site tomorrow morning to make sure this one particular drainage area gets done correctly. I have very high confidence in what the superintendent from Lawrence Lynch showed me. We actually got an instrument out, marked up the pavement, so we knew what we were talking about, you know, we knew what we were doing and they know what they were doing. I, I just, it, it's tough not to do that without an instrument. You really, your eye can't really, your eye looks like it's going downhill, but you really got to know by looking at an instrument. So we broke out an instrument, actually it was Mr. Moran's instrument and we took a couple of shots and we said, okay, that works, let's do this, let's do that. And put the, the new basin to collect water here and that's exactly where they installed it today. So there's also at everybody's driveway, there's a keyway that's been ground out, so there's adequate preparation that's been done for the newly paved road on, on Blue Castle. I also discussed, just full disclosure, I discussed the fact that there was some maintenance responsibilities in that agreement for the rest of the road. And I asked him what he was planning to do and we actually drove down to that section of the road and discussed it, talked about what was done. In fact, while I was preparing to come to this hearing, he emailed both Evan and I showing pictures of the 2020 when they installed these crushed stone drainage swales on either side of the road down closer towards.
Gray Neck Road.
South. And I said, well, I can see some of the stone and yesterday, and he's agreed to remove all the accumulated leaf litter so that it would perform better and then I'm going to take a look at it. And I said, the board is probably going to ask you to do some additional maintenance, reestablish those, those swales. Why don't you remove the leaf litter, get that all done by hand and by leaf blower, however you want to do it, and we'll take another look at it.
He still hasn't done it?
He has not done that yet.
Wasn't that going to be the building?
He looked at one big pothole in the middle of the road in that area and he said, while Lawrence Lynch was there, he's going to have that patched. I said, that would go a long way, I think, to helping. So that was the only major big potholes, wasn't significantly big, but it's a pothole in the center of the road practically. And he said he would get that patched. But the side slopes of, that are shown on the original plan, the Costa Associates Plan, those swales that they installed, which I had never seen those pictures from 2020 until tonight, those, that crushed stone is there, it's all covered by leaves, but it's there. And he agreed to clear all that debris away and let's see what it looks like.
Where's he going to do that?
He didn't give me a specific time, but I told him that this would be on a board agenda in the future and that he needed to get ready to be answered that question.
The board also asked at your last meeting to refer this particular issue to the building commissioner.
I can't understand what you're saying.
The board asked me at your last meeting to refer that particular issue.
To the building.
Commissioner for enforcement. That is, referral's been made, but I don't know if an enforcement letter has gone out, so we'll get action on that regard soon.
Oh, DPW.
From, it'll come from the building commissioner because it's a special permit, zoning enforcement.
Can you talk about the maintenance piece of that special permit?
Correct. That's right. So condition 10 in the public safety mitigation section, I think.
Yes, thank you.
Similarly to the, that referral, you also asked that I refer the photographs of the, like the children playing on the dirt pile to the board of health. The health agents reviewed it. He doesn't feel confident that there's anything in the health code relative to safety. I need to speak also to the commissioner on this regard. But we're going to see if we can compel Mr. Moran to put up a construction fence and a no trespassing sign around that area.
Is that still under the purview of the building commissioner?
The, the request to install such a fence will come from the commissioner.
What is the purpose of that big sand pile there, Ed?
I think they excavated foundations and that's where they put material.
And he hasn't moved it yet.
And he hasn't moved it. There is no purpose.
You mean, there's some, there's some loam that he created in that pile, so he's going to reuse it on the two houses he's got left, but not all of it.
80% of it can go.
You, I, I would guess that's not a bad guess. That's a bad, that's not a bad estimate, Dennis.
Can, may, may I ask a question of Ed? Ed, what do you see at other construction sites for things like that, large piles of dirt?
So there's usually some kind of erosion control put around the, around the outside of it, so it doesn't continue to add sediment into the road, which is why I had him put sedimentation controls on all the catch basins there. I asked him to do some street sweeping and. I asked him to do some street sweeping, and I don't know magically, I shouldn't say magically, I'm not trying to be disparaging, he has been sweeping. It's just that every time I go there, all of a sudden it's been done. I happen to catch it the right time, I guess, but that corner at Carriage Road, he did loam and seed, they, he had his team out yesterday.
But I'm talking about safety of children. What do you see at other sites?
Is it typical to have a large dirt pile in a subdivision?
It, it is, but not for lengthy, lengthy time. And it's not impossible to have that. I mean, you know, is it, if it, I'm, I'm not going to comment on about whether it's a safety hazard or not, but it's certainly something that is unsightly, that could be removed at some point.
Florida law, that would be called an attractive nuisance, and it would be, you know, there'd be liability there if it's not secured.
Right.
So I think that what I'd like to do is, Madam Chair, is suggest that if the building commissioner, like the, like the health director, doesn't feel it's under their purview, that we refer the matter to town council. And I think town councils should just write them a letter.
Temporary construction fence around it would be appropriate because, you know, he's, he's got some area there that he also has other building materials. To me, a pile of dirt is not as dangerous as other building materials and equipment that's there that kids could get into and cut themselves on. But that's just me talking a lot.
But we've seen the picture, this is my problem.
Oh, right.
As, as, as planning board members, we've seen this picture of children on this dirt pile.
Right.
So I kind of feel that, you know, we should authorize staff to, you know, talk to the building commissioner. And if the building commissioner feels it's not in their jurisdiction, that we refer to town council to write a letter to the property owner to request a security fence around that pile, or remove the pile, pile. I think we need to take some action.
And minimum erosion controls need to be placed there until the pile's removed. And that, that's what I would ask him to do. Now, just for everyone's information, I did ask Mr. Moran if he was going to attend tonight. He was unable to do that, but he said he would probably log in and, and watch it on TV. So he'll hear these comments later on if he's not watching already. And if I see him tomorrow, when I see him tomorrow, if I see him tomorrow, I'll certainly mention it again.
So that's the erosion control. To go back to the safety control issue, I make a motion that we authorize staff to talk to the building commissioner about improving safety at that site, including, but not limited to, the unfenced and unguarded pile, large pile of dirt. And if the building commissioner does not feel it's within their jurisdiction for enforcement, I would like to have staff, let's say the board authorizes staff, to send this matter to town council so that a letter can be drafted to the owner to remove that hazard from the site.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Discussion? No discussion? All who agree?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Good motion.
Good motion.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we have, oh, we have the-
Oh, can I say some, can you recognize the conservation commission letter? It's in the packet, you want me to read it?
Okay, so we have in our packet a memo to Jack Moran of Bayberry Building Company from Daniel Kent, our assistant conservation agent. It's dated June 16, 2023, and it's regarding the town of Mashpee Conservation Land Policy, 69 Blue Castle Drive. Dear Mr. Moran, the violations of Mashpee's Chapter 173 Mashpee Conservation Land Bylaw that have occurred at 69 Blue Castle Drive are now considered to be fully remediated. This letter serves as notice of full compliance with enforcement protocols.
Okay, thank you.
So good job in the neighborhood.
All right, now we go to planning for October 2023 town meeting, accessory apartment zoning bylaw amendment. I think we've essentially approved it, have we not?
Well, you, there were additional changes that you asked to be made-
Okay, can you point them out to us?
Subsequent to our last hearing on the matter. Those changes have been made. I just need to locate my copies and I'll walk you through them. There, yeah, somewhere. There we go. First, to amend subsection A of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. I just need to read it, they're very small edits, so you'll have to bear with me. Karen, if I remember correctly, you wanted to see in the end of the last sentence, under enough circumstances may the property owner rent to tenants both the principal dwelling and the accessory apartment at the same time. I think that's the only change for subsection A. Subsection C, changes the minimum area of an accessory apartment to 450 square feet.
Get a typo.
Yep.
Thank you.
Not to exceed 900 square feet.
Not to exceed 900. Which, and then in subsection I, the language relative to renting an accessory apartment or principal dwelling, or an accessory apartment or principal dwelling to which it is accessory, shall be rented, not may be rented, shall be rented.
For periods of at least 12 consecutive months.
Thank you.
Okay.
I believe that was everything.
Yep.
Yes, I agree. So I'd like to make a motion that we pass this on to the select board for approval.
I'd make a motion, I'd make that motion.
I have a question about the first article here.
Go ahead.
It says under, my question is, what if somebody wants to rent to their family?
What's that?
I said, what if somebody wants to rent to their family, both the primary, the principal dwelling-
And the accessory.
Say, I mean, they couldn't-
They can't, they have to live in one of the two units.
Right.
One family has to live in the, in either the principal or the accessory.
Well, I'm saying, say it's, and say if somebody wants to rent to their kids.
They can rent the accessory or the primary dwelling, they can't rent both of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you can't.
And you know why we're doing that? We're doing that, we're trying to get housing.
And just to clarify, Dale, the current, the current accessory apartment regulation doesn't allow a property owner to rent either or. It's either you have to live in your principal dwelling, and you may rent the accessory apartment, but you can't rent one or the other. So this actually is, it, it does, creates greater flexibility for a property owner, allowing them to rent their house and live in the accessory apartment, or vice versa. But, so for example, like I built an accessory apartment for my mother, she's going to be my tenant. But in this situation, I couldn't, I couldn't leave and rent my house to my kids if they're of age. You know what I mean? That's, that would prevent me from doing that, technically.
I'd like your idea, I know where you're going with this. I'd like your idea, is there any way we could work on that for next town meeting? The only reason why I say that is you would not believe the conversation you're going to have regarding family member. Who exactly is a family member and what town council would be comfortable with defining family? Be, because we have family-related accessory apartments in the town of Yarmouth, and it's like this explosive topic. But I, I think that we should, I, I would love to consider that, but not for this town meeting, the next one.
The next one, okay.
Because I think that's a good idea.
Well, because a house could be-
If I owned, if I owned one of these properties, you know, and I had a daughter and a son, you know, maybe, maybe there should be a family-related provision. I think-
Okay, let's think about it for next time, because, you know, we can always make amendments. That's the thing. Let's just get something going, that's good. Okay, now we go to the big one, okay? Everybody put on your thinking caps.
Do we make the motion, do we vote?
We have to vote on it.
I said, motion.
I believe Mary made a motion, but there was not a second, or a discussion, or a vote.
Motion to, to accept this and recommend-
I make a motion to submit these three amendments, these warrant articles, these three warrant articles that amend the accessory apartment bylaw to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the town meeting warrant for October-
October 16, 2023.
As presented.
Good motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, Karen, there we go.
It's after nine.
This is something we should be doing at nine o'clock in the morning.
So I have prepared a presentation to walk you through the raise and replace proposal that, in its current form, again, this is a proposal, there are some policy questions, I think, that are lingering, and I, I want to make clear that this is presented to you as an option in consideration of my knowledge of, of the problem, and I think people's concerns with raise and replace. That creates, I think, flexibility in the right areas and restrictions in, in the appropriate areas as well. I'd like to do this as a presentation and walk you through the presentation. I think what I've struggled with in producing this draft is something I often struggle with, is that when you try to describe a three-dimensional environment and what is allowed in that three-dimensional environment using words on a paper, it can be confusing and complex. So I'll throw in another pitch for Form-based code for another time. But for now, this is what I'm going to present to you. And you each have a colored copy on your table. And I should note that this has been reviewed with council. I presented a question to council that I provided to you also for, for context purposes, so you could understand what the department, my, my approach to this particular issue was, to try and come to some sort of resolution, I think, that recognizes the variable stakeholders impacted by the bylaw. But also, I recognize that the language is complicated. I have a strong grasp of where we are, but I want to make sure you understand. And if you don't understand, I, I want to make sure that I thoughtfully field your questions. And I think it would be prudent to get to a point of submitting a raise and replace amendment for October. But if we can't get there, you know, I'm not going to feel bad about it. I want to make sure that we get this right. So I'd like to start, you know, walking through it with you. Just before I do, I need to make sure I have my draft. All right, so shout out to my new assistant, Karen Leslie. I actually was able to put together a presentation for you to go through this today, which is very helpful. So Karen is in my office, do reach out to her, do say hello to her when you have an opportunity. If you have done so, and we are appreciative, I'm certainly thankful to have her in the office. And I know it's late, so I'm going to try and do this efficiently, but I do want to be thorough. So just a little bit of background and base level approach to this. The purpose of this bylaw generally is to define for the ZBA what is and is not, quote unquote, detrimental when evaluating impacts of continued extended or altered nonconformities when raising, voluntarily raising and replacing single-family dwellings in the town. The proposal changes the limits to how much a pre-existing nonconformity can be continued, extended, or altered by establishing those limits, and defines an acceptable, or at least a proposed acceptable limit to growth of dimensional nonconformities. It does not provide the ability to extend nonconformities to the maximum.
Evan, can you do the lights?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be better.
I know where you're going with that. They're behind you.
Sounds good.
Good.
Why don't you come up closer?
Now it can't see mine.
So just, important to take note of is, you know, what, how, how the raise and replace bylaw functions today. And it is very general in its approach. It essentially says that any dimensional pre-existing nonconformity may be continued, extended, or altered. There are no limits established in the bylaw that say this much growth is detrimental. It is completely at the discretion of the zoning board of appeals to determine what detriment is. And so when evaluating lot coverage, building height, and all the setback nonconformities, that is not prescribed for the board of appeals. And that puts them in a situation for property owners to, to ask for the world, and them have to balance their development rights with neighborhood concerns. And that's a difficult proposition to be in. So what I'm trying to accomplish here is, A, for the board of appeals, to have a structure to operate in, to give clarity for neighbors and property owners that are in raise and replace heavy communities for what they can expect to see in terms of any growth in those areas and limits on that growth. And further, for applicants and people representing applicants, so that they are approaching the board with a plan that is modest and reasonable and, and not what many would consider to be excessive. So today, if you have a, a very critical point that I need to make clear, is that today, for a raise and replace, if you have a side setback nonconformity or any other nonconformity, you're allowed to make that nonconformity more nonconforming. You're allowed to derogate further from the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, with the appropriate findings, of course, from the board of appeals. What this draft is contemplating is that we are, we are stating in the purpose and intent of the bylaw, section one, that further derogations are not acceptable if they are, and so creating or increasing the intensity of any dimensional nonconformity is not acceptable and would not be permissible and would require a finding of substantial detriment from the board of appeals. So that's one critical change. You cannot increase the intensity of pre-existing nonconformities under this bylaw draft you have in front of you. So proposed changes, again, if you're, if you have a pre-existing nonconforming home today, and you want to raise and replace it, you would be allowed today and through, after this bylaw, if it were approved, to increase the building footprint to the maximum allowed in the underlying zoning district. So you're allowed to go to the, the maximum side setback, building height, in accordance with the base zoning district. That is in existence today and maintains consistency in this draft. But again, this removes the ability to increase the intensity of any nonconformity.
There's no grandfathering of side setback.
So you would be able to maintain, if you had a side setback nonconformity, say you're 10 feet from the property line, but you're required to be 15, you can maintain that 10-foot setback. It, it respects your grandfather rights. But it does not allow you to go to nine, or eight, or seven.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And so, and, and lastly, it establishes limits for modest growth, and I think this is a policy decision that the board will need to consider. But, you know, I had contemplated with you, and you'd suggested that we utilize Dennis, the town of Dennis's approach here. They allow for some modest growth within a portion of the floor space that is nonconforming, and I'll, I'll define that a little bit for you, to 40% of that area. And I have some images that are going to help you wrap your mind around this. But it's, it's incentivizing property owners to upgrade their homes, you know, for, say, FEMA requirements or an IA septic system that would now be required. But that growth is not limitless, it is limited. So this is a hypothetical. This is not to scale, but it, it offers a glimpse at what I'm trying to effectuate and communicate through this bylaw change for you in a conceptual manner that I think you'll be able to wrap your minds around. So this is a random lot, A, X, whatever letter, it's a random lot. It has a front setback of 25 feet, which is 15 feet nonconforming. On the side, on the left side, it is 10 feet from the lot line and thus has a five-foot nonconformity because 15 feet is required. On the right side of this building, 20 feet is, is provided to the right, the right-hand setback, which is conforming, and there's 40-foot feet provided to the rear that is also conforming. This lot is 15,000 square feet, and the dwelling has a footprint of 1,250 square feet, approximately 50 feet by 25, we'll say, and this is a single story. 1,250 square feet over the lot area, 15,000 square feet, gives you an 8.3% lot coverage by structures. This house, though, is located totally within the 100-year floodplain. And so Mashpee's bylaw does not allow us to utilize wetlands, coastal wetlands, land subject to coastal storm flow, the floodplain, towards the denominator of your lot coverage calculation. So in this particular case, it would be 1,250 square feet over zero. Effectively, this is 100% lot coverage. So I'm going to walk you through a series of changes to this, you'll see this dashed rectangle to the right. So as I noted to you before, every property owner has the right to extend their home to the minimum maximums established in the zoning bylaw. So in this case, the property owner could extend- So, in this case, the property owner could extend that right setback from 20 feet to 15, gaining 5 feet in that area. You'll note that because there is a limit, there's a front setback non-conformity, they can't just add, they couldn't extend that whole mass within that setback area, because that there's limits in this bylaw as to how much additional floor area can be added in the non-conforming floor space. So, if they were to build out the building footprint to totally within the minimums and maximums established in the zoning bylaw, it would look something like this. Their rear setback goes to 15 feet, their side goes to 15. That's all within the confines of Mashpee's current zoning bylaw, 17431.
What's the required front setback?
The front setback is 40.
Oh, 40, sorry.
So, you'll note the 10-foot to the left is a non-conforming side, and the 25 to the front is a non-conforming front setback. And so, the dashed lines indicate the redeveloped, you know, growth area, if you will, allowed by virtue of the base zoning. And the massing in the portions of the home within that dashed area can be carried up a second story.
The dotted line could be the second story.
Correct. But there are caveats to the portion of the floor space in the non-conforming areas, which I'll get to. So, because there's a side setback non-conforming on the right, and again, limits to the amount of floor space that could be added, you're not going to see that carried down into the non-conforming area or left in that side setback non-conformity.
Can you just tell us again, it's 30 feet in Pompaneset and 35?
Height is 30 feet in Pompaneset, 35 feet everywhere else.
Elsewhere.
And so, in this image, the red shaded area would be that portion of the floor space that is non-conforming. That's the area within the setback where there's livable space of the home. So, anyhow, in this bylaw draft proposal, any house, any proposed raise and replace that has a situation like this where a portion of the floor space is non-conforming, in this case, the non-conforming floor space is 750 square feet. That's to the side and to the front. 40% of that is 300 square feet of growth permissible in that same setback area, either on the same floor or a second floor. So, here in this side, that 10, that's approximately 5 by 50, I think it is, maybe it's 5 by 25.
You're going too fast.
So, the dark shaded red-
I'm on the page before.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so this, you, this is the non-conforming-
The red shaded area is the portion of the floor space in the non-conforming setbacks.
Setback area.
And that's important because you can only, this bylaw puts a limit based on this area?
Right, so today, in today's bylaw, there is no limit to how much you can continue to extend or alter this space. So, if you have the side setback non-conforming to the 10-foot side setback, you can maintain that today, and you can also carry it straight up.
Okay, so you are proposing-
So, if, so that side setback, that, there's two, you see two rectangles, one on the left is the small skinny and the one on the front. There's a side setback non-conformity and a front setback non-conformity. On the left side, the portion of that space in the dark red-
Yeah.
...equals 125 square feet, it's 5 feet by 25 feet approximately. So, only 40% of that area can be added within the same setback area. So, you couldn't carry that mass straight up. It would have to be, if you see that green rectangle, that's just for, you know, conceptual purposes, you can only carry that amount of area in the same non-conforming space. And that's either going up or extending back within your setback limits. Remember, you cannot create new non-conformities.
So, what happens, okay.
Go ahead, Mary.
Nope, nope, we're here, go ahead.
And so, then in the front, there's also a front setback non-conformity, in this case, it equals approximately 675 square feet, there's 15 by 45. So, again, only 40% of that area, or 270 square feet, could be added within that same setback area. So, in this conceptual case, 300, I see, I think I'm seeing a conflict in my math here. Assuming that, I'm going to stick with the 270, I am too late to do the math right now, but what I'm trying to communicate to you is that only 40% of that front setback area could be added within that same area, either to the right side in that green rectangle or in a second floor. So, what this would do, if someone had a single-story home and they wanted to go up, because this allows you to go up to, again, to the 30 or 35-foot maximum height, it would push the mass in away from the setback areas. So, someone, you know, you hear in Pompaneset a lot, the guy, you know, elevated their lot on fill, and then they went closer to the side setback and they carried that straight up to a second story, and now, you know, people are looking at each other, you know, as they're going to sleep at night. This would mitigate that problem.
So, it would allow the second-floor development within the proper setback area?
Correct. And so, what the bylaw also states is that even if you have a setback non-conformity or some other non-conformity, we're going to focus on setbacks because that really is what is the meat and potatoes of this particular bylaw change, you can increase your lot coverage by structures within the confines of the base dimensional criteria of the district. So, again, you can get over to that 15-foot setback and get to the 15 in the rear, as long as you're not creating new non-conformities and within that 40% restriction if the board wants to utilize that metric. And again, this doesn't allow, under any circumstances, lot coverage by structures in excess of the maximum requirements of the underlying zoning district, exclusive of coastal wetlands. And so, I want to discuss that point to you as well. I noted to you that this lot is 100% in the floodplain and has this odd calculation to determine lot coverage by dividing 1,250 square feet by zero. You can't divide by zero, and that's effectively 100% lot coverage. And what the purpose of raise and replace is, is to evaluate existing conditions. And if there's a structure on the ground, I think there's a level of prudence to evaluating the actual lot coverage by structures. Now, we don't necessarily need to provide this distinction. It's not a waiver in any case, it just provides clarity for the engineers and the board of appeals in reviewing these applications. However, the way they are currently managing this is on the submission of plans for raise and replaces, they show two lot coverage calculations, one where it's like the FEMA floodplain calculation, which is 100%, and then they note the quote-unquote "actual" lot coverage by structures. So, what I wanted to do in this bylaw, and what I believe is communicated in this bylaw, is that you're allowed, you would be allowed to continue or extend your, the structures on your lot, either your home or a garage or your shed, up to the maximum lot coverage allowance, exclusive of wetlands.
Which is 20%.
So, if your lot's 10,000 square feet, you got a 2,000 square foot footprint, and that is, that's it. And that includes accessory structures. And we can go through the specific language in this bylaw, I'm really summarizing this for you.
Is it shed?
Yes, it was.
The shed, yeah.
And again, so building height, this would allow you to increase to the maximum height allowed in the underlying zoning district. That's an existing condition that would be carried through today. If you're a single-story, you can go up to a second story, up to the maximum allowed in the district, so 30 or 35 feet. It does not allow buildings, under any circumstances, to be above the maximum height of the underlying zoning district. One thing that is not in the bylaw that you could consider, I'm not aware of any pre-existing non-conforming structures in Mashpee that are height non-conformities.
There are.
But there may be.
They're in Pompaneset.
So, you could, you could establish a similar condition to the lot coverage non-conformities, whereas you can maintain it but cannot exceed it. So, if you're required at 30 and you're 31, you can stay 31 or respect that grandfather right, but you cannot exceed the 31. That's a provision that's not in here that we could put in here if you wanted to do that. And again, this isn't a substantial deviation from the existing condition, however, nothing in the current bylaw considers height in any meaningful way. A few other contemplated changes or additions to the raise and replace bylaw is that it would prohibit the utilization of impervious surfaces outside building footprints in the Pompaneset overlay district. So, if you have an asphalt driveway today, and you want to raise and replace your home, you're going to replace that driveway with impervious material. And further, it provides a few pathways for redeveloping your home by right, if you, and incentivizes that redevelopment at a smaller scale by allowing the raise and replace by right if you comply with all the dimensional requirements or rebuild your home, the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw today, with the exception of lot frontage and lot area, or you rebuild in your current footprint at more or less the same mass. And again, it allows the ZBA to consider lot coverage impacts exclusively from coastal wetlands and its impact on lot coverage calculations. So, again, this is, the purpose is to, is to address what many consider to be insensitive redevelopment in some of our higher-density neighborhoods in coastal areas, and it would encourage present and future development to maintain harmony in those neighborhoods, respect the fabric of the neighborhoods, certainly mitigate the existing condition, and it would clarify which changes, extensions, or alterations of non-conformities maybe, or would, would be defined as detrimental than what is currently existing, incentivize property owners to make the upgrades to their property we want to see them make, such as becoming more compliant and more resilient with FEMA requirements and septic improvements such as IAs, as the Board of Health regulations now require, by providing a pathway for modest alterations or extensions within existing setback non-conformities. And it would encourage property owners to voluntarily demolish and reconstruct their homes within their current footprint. That is my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer questions to you specifically about the language of the bylaw, if you still have lingering questions, which I'm sure you do. Madam Chair.
I would suggest that, you know, people ask questions if they have any, that we should take this home with us, and we should come back next time when we really understand this stuff.
And if it would be helpful, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to provide like a memo that enumerates, in absolute layman's terms possible, what each of these sections is saying.
That would be great.
And I think it's simple enough, but I understand it's, you know, if you're not talking about this all day, it can be complicated. But I hope you understand the purpose, and I hope you understand the approach. I think there are some policy decisions you need to make within the current draft that I'm more than willing to listen to you on.
Have you had any discussion with the zoning board at all?
Very minor, but I would like to provide this to the board of appeals ASAP and get their comment. My goal was always to host, was to host a joint meeting on this, but ultimately, I want you to establish some policy direction for me and finalize this in better detail.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have two concerns that are in here right now, and one is using land that we don't normally use to calculate lot coverage and using that in this calculation. So, we have sections of the bylaw, and I think Evan disagrees with me on this, but-
Talking about OSID?
Hmm?
What are you talking about?
So, when you do lot coverage in this town, in our bylaw, if I understand correctly, to calculate that 20% coverage, you can only use upland that's in your lot. You can't use wetland or land subject to coastal flow, okay? And this is, this raise and replace is providing significant relief without mitigation for that. I mean, we're a board that wants to put forward a proposal where there's no fill in certain areas in the floodplain. But this, this, this doesn't kind of fit into that flow, that mindset. So, you know, I would like to look at some language where if the upland calculation is less than the current lot coverage, that there's some type of calculation that's done at that point. Do you know what I mean? Rather than getting to this ridiculous calculation of a division by zero. That's ridiculous.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
Because right now, our bylaw, it's being, I think it's being interpreted the wrong way. If you have a number over zero, that means it's not allowed, right?
It's not real.
So, right.
Well, that's right.
It's not real.
That's right.
Okay? It's undefined. Therefore, that footprint of that building cannot be expanded. And that, I think, looking at it rather than this area divided by zero kind of calculation, if you say, if you start to look at, well, how much wet up- upland, no wetland, no land subject to coastal flow, how much is actually on the site? And if that's smaller than your footprint, right, then you can't change your footprint. Or, let's say there's a limit on how much you can change your footprint, 10%, 20%, 25%. But, you know, going down this path where, which is going to be deliberated in court, right, is just going to get deliberated in court again and again and again, and I think we need a fresh approach to that. Get rid of that whole math calculation.
Yeah, I think-
You know, if you get into this special case where the footprint of your building, your existing building, is no more than the upland that you have, then, then, you have to go to a different calculation to how to increase that footprint.
It's a reasonable approach.
Right? The other thing is, I think that still allowing the ZBA, there's some new language in here that, it's going in a pathway that I don't think will be fruitful. We, I took this on, I don't know if everybody else did, but because of the petitioned article that was at town meeting, there's support to tweak this bylaw to address the concerns of the petitioners. And if we're going to just throw it back to the ZBA to determine whether it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, you know, that's not, that's not improving this. It has to be a yes or a no. I liked the way that it was written before, that they can't make a substantial, they can't make, may not, it says, findings by the zoning board of appeals that may not be substantially more detrimental, and then you just had it.
Counsel made those edits.
I know, and counsel is very close to the ZBA, okay, and involved in those lawsuits, and involved in interpreting those lawsuits and those decisions. And I think that, you know, putting that the ZBA can consider the following criteria, you know, is not substantially more detrimental, you're just, you're just throwing that, you're taking out the certainty that we're trying to introduce in the bylaw. You know, you're putting it back, saying, well, okay, yep, these are what we think your parameters should be, but you still can determine whether it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. And that's the whole conflict that's happening right now in these raise and replace neighborhoods, is that neighbors are coming to these meetings and saying, for God's sakes, don't approve this. We're the neighborhood, it's substantially more detrimental to our neighborhood, and they feel like they're being ignored. So, this is, our efforts should be to resolve that, is to resolve that. And in that spirit, I mean, I think you've worked really hard in what, like, to me, we're really close, but we need to get people on board with it. I want those two changes, right? But I think because this happened, this was spurred on by a petition article, I think that we should first workshop with the petitioners, and then be the bridge between the petitioners and the ZBA.
If the board wants to take time to do that, the planning department is not opposed to taking that time.
I don't think we're ready for October. I don't think we'll be ready. I mean, if it was, if it was just us and the, and the select board, I would say yes, but there's these other two parties that, that we need to get, build consensus with them.
That's fine with, that's fine with, that's fine with me. I am the planning department.
I agree with Mary.
And I know we've got busy schedules and everything, but this might be, this workshop might be something, and we're so busy, our regular Wednesday night meetings are so busy with the special, these special permits. I think that maybe we should, we should have a meeting that's, you know, at the library, at a date that we don't normally meet on, I don't know how everybody else feels.
I suppose this is a good opportunity to let you know, too, that I spoke with the town manager relative to working with the drafts person or an architect to develop 3D representations of what we're discussing, and he's allowing me to do that.
Yes!
So, that would certainly be a valuable tool in workshopping these issues. That's it.
Okay.
Rob, yes.
Are you done? May I? Couple of, couple of issues, and the business of, let's say, existing conditions of upland. I support what Mary's saying, that, you know, it talks about the fill.
Yes.
So, for, if you had, all these calculations for a raise and replace- So for, if you had all these calculations for a raise and replace based on existing conditions, less additional fill or whatever.
Yeah.
Would be desirable. It's just like a height condition. If I have, you know, a height that I'm, I want to go over the minimum height, I, I could, or maximum height, I could fill my land and say, you know, I'm only 35 feet. But...
Technically, you're not allowed to do that.
You're not, you can't, you, you have to get a four-point average.
Natural grade, right.
Why can't you do this for the wetlands as well? No fill, get existing conditions, and therefore, that's, that's how you calculate your lot size. You know, not considering any wetland area. The other thing is, get the divided by zero out of the bylaws totally.
Doesn't make sense.
It's not a real number. And if you go by Mary's suggestion, is use the calculations based on the upland, no filled upland.
I get that. I think that was a good suggestion.
You know what I'm saying? Like, if you start to trigger this weird mathematical situation, then go to a percentage of footprint increase.
So, I mean, if I understand what your comment was, it was to, it was to respect and maintain the, and utilize the lot coverage calculations as defined in 17431 and maybe one other section, I think in the footnotes, and say that if you, if you are one of those people in the floodplain, minorly, a majority of, or totally in, that you, you can raise and replace, but it's going to be in the footprint.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's your suggestion.
Yeah, like, like base it off of an increase on the...
I get that. I can work on that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think more people will understand it.
I get that.
The architects will be able to come with it.
At least, if you could put that back on the screen.
Oh, sure.
It doesn't have a page number, so.
It's a special one, resource area that's by its own law.
Well, it's our bylaw though. It's, and it's not odd, it's what we want. So...
That one, Rob?
We're, we're leading the way on this. People are coming up to me from other communities going, "That's great."
If you want to restrict, you know, the black dotted line, totally agree with it. The, the two green spots, I, I can't see why you would extend a known nonconformance. Or allow a known nonconformance.
One thing I, I didn't note and should have noted is that all of this conceptual discussion ignored the lot coverage here. So like, this could be well over 20.
Oh, yeah, no.
Like, so this was just to explain to you the mechanics of it, not to say like, you can just go to 50%. That's not what I'm meaning to communicate here.
But you're, you're changing the footprint of the nonconforming area.
It provide, yes, modestly.
And, like, 40%.
Yeah.
That's, why, why make something that's nonconforming, more nonconforming?
So, I think, I mean, my position on this is going to, you know, I, I kind of look at this from a few different angles. Obviously, I listened to the concerns of community members and neighbors who maybe have been living adjacent to or near a project that they felt was too big and was detrimental and got approved. But I, we're also asking property owners to make fair amount of changes in how they conduct life on their Mashpee property. I mean, we've increased the naturally vegetated buffer strip requirements to 75 feet, jurisdictional boundaries have increased to 150, we're requiring IAs in all of these areas. We need to incentivize property owners to make these improvements.
Why?
Why is right.
Why?
Well, because then maybe they won't, don't, don't we, don't we want them to make them?
Why?
Don't we care about the, the quality of life of those people who live in those areas? I mean...
They can raise and replace what they have on their...
The quality of your life of everybody in Mashpee is wonderful.
No, I understand that. My, my point is, though, I don't know, I feel like there's a, there's a portion of people that we're totally ignoring in that regard, and it's the people who own these lots that want to improve them and are being asked to make substantial investments in them and want to modestly grow to accommodate that investment. I think that's a reasonable position that many people would share. And so again, I'm just providing options, and you're making the, you're giving me the policy direction, but I'm just trying to enumerate what I hear from many other people too.
It's very valid.
Yeah.
Very valid.
So, I, I think that if, if our next stop is with the petitioners, to see what this would do for them.
I did send Glenn a very, very early draft. He has not seen the most recent, so I'd be happy to provide that to Glenn and think about it being a workshop.
Yeah.
And I suppose we'll defer to a future time meeting.
Oh, I think so. I think this is, I'm sorry, this is, we need more time.
So we'll continue this to another time, but we're not prepared to make a time, a specific time at this point.
No problem. Let me evaluate some, let me consider some of Mary's comments and others and provide, come back with some additional options and begin getting some support from the neighborhood to come up with a schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
Continue, motion to continue, looking at proposal for amendment to raise and replace at some date to be determined.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Aye?
Let me second.
No discussion, aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Aye.
Okay, I'll talk about this, it'll take me two minutes. This is the final tree bylaw, thank God.
I printed clean copies for everybody too, because I think there were track changes on in the PDF, and it's ill of.
Oh, did you fill in the blanks?
Three things here. Page one, this tree bylaw only applies to those engaged in a building activity. In other words, we left out Harry homeowner, because it's, there's no way that we can enforce it.
Right.
The second thing is on page 11.
You cut down trees, a lot of trees to make this bylaw, 11 pages long.
I have wasted so much paper, I can't tell you. Page 11, enforcement, starts at 20, enforcement. Next, the last page, the town planner or his designee, designee is hereby authorized to enforce all provisions of the Mashpee, blah, 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 and may designate monitoring enforcement agents to include but not limited to. That's a total catchall, so it could be, God, even, anybody.
The way, the way this is currently structured is that applications will be filed in my office, and the likely monitoring agent and enforcement agent would be the code compliance.
Right. And then the other thing is...
Now, can I just ask Evan a question?
Sure.
In your job description, do you do enforcement?
So that, no, I'm not an enforcement agent. This would authorize me to be an enforcement agent.
Okay, so I just, I just advise you to check with your boss about changing that in your, in your legal job, legally binding job description, so that we don't cause a conflict based on a town.
I got the, I got the, the other duties as assigned provision in there, so...
Oh, no.
If Rodney says so, it's, I think it's on me.
And the other thing, the last one is page 11, this, under paragraph 18, this bylaw comes under general laws as opposed to zoning, so we're looking at majority.
50%.
Right.
Majority.
51%.
51%.
Yeah, so better than zoning.
Oh, there was one question I actually had that I wanted to raise to the board. I highlighted one section in here.
Yeah.
It's a waiver request, okay? There were, this was initially drafted to empower presumably me, the enforcement agent or designee, to waive the requirements of this bylaw during a period of emergency. I don't necessarily feel confident that, with that, I think...
That's something for DPW.
I reckon, and I would suggest, that this waiver provision should simply say that...
Where is that waiver?
Page five.
Page five, bottom of the page. I would say that in the event of a declaration of emergency by...
Oh, I see.
Select board or the town manager, that the provisions of the bylaw are waived by that action, not by me or anyone else.
All right, so do we want a state of emergency for the county?
Whomever the appropriate authority is, I don't know, but I don't think it should be, I don't think it should be me.
It's the county.
Well, what language do we want to put here?
I just think requirements of this bylaw shall be waived during a period of emergen, subsequent to a declaration of emergency by Barnstable County or by the select board.
Leave it out, right.
But, you know, I don't know, I have a lot of bad days, you know? I don't want to, you know, I have an emergency, waive the bylaw.
So, a declaration of emergency in the, in Barnstable County or in the Commonwealth?
By, by Barnstable County.
Or by the state.
By, by, by the state.
This will get removed by council.
Should it be weather related?
I, I mean, I, I think so. I mean, I think it should be specifically to a safety issue, so like, a weather event necess...
Who runs the EOC here in town, DPW?
I don't know what an EOC is.
Emergency Operations Center. When you have a, when you have a hurricane coming in, we have a hurricane...
I think, I think Fire does.
Fire, Fire Department, right?
Fire that runs the EOC?
I think it is.
They have the power to deploy and declare that an emergency. They usually take their lead from the state, so we'd have to ask you a question.
I just wanted to, I wanted to suggest that I wasn't comfortable with that particular provision. If we're going to vote to submit this, I'd suggest and request you vote to submit it conditionally upon rectifying that issue.
Yes.
And, and if I may, just don't depend on it being a statewide emergency?
Right.
Because sometimes the Cape?
Oh, it could be...
It's a county emergency.
It could be a county, it could be a county or a state emergency.
Emergency, due to some type of weather.
It might be under the purview of the town manager. The town manager declares an emergency, so...
I don't think so.
I will find the answer.
We got, you, you remember the robocall? Years ago, there was a robocall, and the, the town declared a state of emergency, and everyone freaked out because they, they went beyond their powers in doing that. It had to be the county or the state. Remember the robocall?
It follows if there's a hurricane and there's a state of emergency established somewhere in that EOC protocol, Emergency Operations Center protocol, that, that the state of emergency is in place so they can pay people to go out and respond. So there's got to be a, there's got to be a threshold there.
There is, there's something.
You just got to talk to the right person.
That's town council.
Well, town council will review all of these bylaws, so I'll note in the cover letter submission that I wanted to address that provision.
So should we, we make a motion to...
To pass this bylaw, tree preservation bylaw, onto the select board for placement on the, on the agenda for October 2023 town meeting, except before we do that, we have to find the correct language and waiver.
For waiver.
As listed on page five.
Would you like to be empowered to approve that language? On advice from the town planner?
Yes.
So moved.
Second?
Motion.
Yes.
Discussion?
Any discussion? Vote?
Aye.
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 I used to chair and do the motions. Now I have time to think about the motions.
Nice.
Are we ready? Is it, is it Dennis' time?
Uh, let's see, there's...
Oh, no.
There's, oh, okay, I'm sure you don't want to hear this, but this is water quality, and I really am, I won't say I'm an expert in this.
Oh, hey, wait, wait, board engineer report.
Oh, you have a report?
Oh, just for everybody's identification, you know, I, as you already heard, the Aquay Highlands report that Blue Castle Drive, Aquay Highlands subdivision, that, that paving will continue tomorrow. Hopefully, it'll be done tomorrow without any issues. The other areas that I have been, we've been involved with wrapping up are, well, there's still an active construction is, is Country Club Estates.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's still considered, continuing with some infrastructure work, that's only water, water and drainage, and that's all that's been done so far. They're getting ready and doing some roadway subgrade. We're trying to wrap up the Sherwin-Williams project and completely put it to bed. There's a outstanding item with the, to the sedimentation basin. The grass just never got grown in and, and, and established well. They came out and replanted some areas. Those little areas they replanted are nice and green, everything else isn't all that great, so we're still waiting for, I, I told the, Evan and I have been communicating with the, with the developer, because he just wants to, to put it to bed and get it done. I told him we'd go out and take a look at it, and now that, you know, obviously that, I, I had someone look at it last week when I was out of town, and it's no, no different than it was a couple of weeks when I was here and, and end of April. So I think we're another month, another season before we can say it's completely done, but, you know, it's 90% there. Overall, that was a decent project, it turned out well. Willow Circle, not to belabor Willow Bend, but Willow Circle, there's been some work done landscaping wise. They installed a stone wall, a nice landscaping stall wall there.
It's pretty.
And I immediately brought it up to Matt Eddy that I was concerned about the turning movement for a truck, for a truck, because the edge of pavement was very close to the edge of the wall. And so they have moved the road, they've shifted the road so to provide a larger separation from the edge of wall to the edge of pavement. By doing that, they shrunk the landscape island in the middle, that's how they accommodated it. So he sent me a revised plan and wanted to make sure, he showed me the auto turn traffic sweeping turning movements with the, with the ladder truck, the Mashpee ladder truck, and it, and I told him my, in the email, I said, yep, I've reviewed it, I, you know, recommend approval, there's no issue there with the changes they made to accommodate that safety, that turning movement for safety. So there's still, they're building a few homes in there, the drainage and infrastructure's all been installed, and it's just awaiting final landscaping. So we're several months, a year away from closing that out, but that's the latest that's happened there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Those houses are so close to that next property, it's sad. Yeah.
I have also, just FYI, been also assisting the zoning board with a couple of reviews, and Evan's fully aware of that. Evan's been attending the plan review, site plan review, and then making recommendations to the zoning board, or the zoning board already are thinking that they would recommend that I review it, and I, I don't know, probably in this year alone, done four of them, five of them, four of them anyway, so.
Okay. Yeah.
Ed, have you looked at Kenny Marster's property?
That's Country Club Estates.
I mean, he got that road going all the way down now. I mean, he had to come to the planning board with that, and the entrance is horrible.
So the entrance is a discussion...
Washington.
Country Club Estates next to Washington Country Club.
Yeah.
So the entrance, the entrance work that they did, I wasn't in favor of. Evan and I talked about it, he didn't like it.
You don't know who's coming out, going right, left, coming in.
So, so right now, we've had a discussion with Mr. Marsters and his son, and we had a meeting, it was many months ago, it's probably time that we reconvene that meeting, because they're, they agreed, I didn't like the safety aspect of it, and I didn't like the sight distance aspect, aspect of it coming out.
Right.
Because you're taking your life in your hand a little bit in both directions, so...
Right till 4:00.
They didn't disagree, and they were going to have it surveyed, he was going to have additional survey provided and get back to us, and we never heard from him since. So that's time for us to kind of reconvene for that.
I mean, I, I know that Dennis, Dennis has a really good understanding of this intersection, so I don't know how you feel about this, but I'm comfortable with Dennis going to any site meeting with you.
Yeah, I go with you.
Because you really, have always had really good ideas about that intersection and how it should flow. And you were involved in the original...
But Charlie...
Yeah, I want to remind the board that there is, the board approved a modified intersection design.
Right.
That, that Charlie worked through, it was my first two months here.
Right.
With Charlie and Mark, Mark Adon, engineer was, it was Marsters' engineer. We have an approved design, and Kenny has verbally committed to doing that redesigned entrance. I guess the appropriate, the challenge is, you know, and what Kenny would assert and has, is that we never modified the definitive plan. He's not required to do it without a modification of the plan.
But this was a safety...
So, so I think we need to figure, we had contemplated when Charlie was still here, prior to Ed coming on board, he said, Ken has three phases of the development, you know, you said he's not coming back to the board. He will have to come back to the board, because he's going to want to release the lots and begin to develop the...
That he's putting the infrastructure in.
So he's entitled to build a road as you've approved it, but eventually, he's going to need to come back to you to release those lots and place the security.
So we approved it, passed it, the development yet.
Say it again, Dennis?
I thought we only approved up to where he was putting the houses, and he was going to come back with the extension, he never did.
So, again, he has the rights to install the infrastructure in that whole subdivision, the road, utilities, the drainage, which he's doing, he's preparing now to come back which he's doing, he's preparing now to come back to you to say, I've done this in phase two, Ed's reviewed and inspected it. I'd like to release the lots in phase two. You've only released, I'd say, a third of them so far. So he'll have to come back to request an additional release. We had contemplated when Charlie was still here, capturing in any security the funds necessary to do the intersection. And so that's something we can still consider as well as he comes back. And so I would anticipate him returning for a covenant release on a second portion at some point relatively soon after he does base coat.
Right, so they're not even close to being ready to put paving down. But regarding that intersection, I was very concerned about the safety of that intersection. I showed them, we discussed with them, the design of the intersection that you approved. Again, Evan's correct. He felt like he wasn't a hundred percent compelled to install that, but acknowledged the safety considerations that need to be relooked, relooked at. And he agreed to have his surveyor get some better idea of the existing conditions, the edge of, basically edge of vegetation as you approach from one side and the other grading on one side so that we could come up with a, perhaps a second design that he thinks he could build and we think we could accept from a safety point of view. Right now, if you leave, if you come down Old Barnstable Road from 151 and you go to turn left, you can't see far enough in front of you in front of the Quashtown Country Club to really, you really got to be careful. You got to slow down. And not only that, then the person behind you has to see you slowing down.
Right.
Okay, that's number one. And then when you get, when you're leaving his subdivision and you're sitting there in front of the country club and you're ready to turn left or right, that person approaching from 151 on Old Barnstable could be screaming down that road. You won't see him until they get to that edge. So that was the safe sight distance concern I had. Really, it affects both directions.
But shouldn't we follow up then with him?
Yeah, so we agreed, we agreed that, he agreed to have some additional survey done so we could talk about what design should be done, what changes in design should be done. And unfortunately, we haven't, we haven't pestered him. We haven't followed up and that just hasn't happened. They may have done the survey, but they haven't gone back to us. So it's time for us to reach out to him again.
How did that road ever get built like that with a curve like that?
That road was approved in nineteen seventy-three.
I mean, we travel that road. You must almost do it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm on that twice a week. I mean, I.
I run that every now and again. It's pretty, it's pretty dicey.
Stop!
I wouldn't want to be, I'm glad, I'm glad, yeah, that I don't have to turn into that subdivision because that's tough.
Get those ancient ways marked for you.
If you're, if you're driving from, if you're driving from Great Neck Road North and coming in that way, a lot safer entering it, right? So you don't have to worry about the upcoming traffic.
Coming down the hill.
But coming down that hill is tough.
Another question for Evan. In the industrial park, they've been doing a lot of development.
Yeah.
How come they never come back to a planning board? They used to come to a planning board for each lot and we would say, we would have the engineer Charlie look at it for the drainage and how many trees they cut.
None of the projects that are permitted in the industrial park trigger review by your board. They trigger review by the Board of Appeals.
That was, I mean, they seem to come when, years ago, they would come.
So the initial industrial park was a DRI. You probably evaluated the initial DRI. That DRI has lapsed and is no longer valid.
Okay.
But the uses in the use table, the uses and whatever triggers the review threshold by the planning board generally are not for uses they were seeing go up in the industrial park.
I mean, we have like, they're supposed to leave the trees up in the front of it. Couple of lots, Cape Way, cut all the trees down.
I remember, so the DRI, the invalidity, there was an appeal on this basis, actually relatively recently on one of the industrial park lots. But the DRI was required of naturally vegetated buffer strip between the adjacent residential neighborhood and a property owner had gone and cleared it in preparation for development. And he was not aware of a DRI and the neighborhood next, the neighbor next door asserted, appealed on those grounds. They eventually settled, but it was essentially stated by council that the provisions of the DRI are non-enforceable.
And we had, there was no zoning that could have been enforced?
Well, so we, people shouldn't be manipulating their lots prior to coming to ask for a permit.
Yeah.
Because it removes the ability for you to establish conditions based on the existing conditions. But no, I mean, there's not a requirement to maintain that depth of a vegetated buffer strip between an industrial area and between a residential district.
I have reviewed.
Can we put that on the list for zoning law change for next time?
Several of them, three of them at least, two of them at least, I'm trying to think of, it's three.
So I, I think that we should put that on the list of zoning bylaw changes for next.
Naturally vegetated buffer strips requirements between.
I thought that was in there.
Industrially zoned property and in residentially zoned property.
Where do you find that?
Residential.
It's essentially at that industrial park and that buffer is maintained on nine out of the ten lots.
Yeah.
And it's been enhanced by way of the settlement.
Oh, where do you find it in the bylaws?
I'll have to review and audit the bylaw and see what's there.
Check. I can't, I, yep, I know that's the intent of the zoning bylaw was to have naturally vegetated buffers, especially in between an industrial lot and a residential lot. I mean, if the industrial lots want to, you know, see each other, that's fine with respect to the residential.
This case was very funny though because it was the first time I was ever deposed on any, any case. But it was interesting because, you know, you can't, if there's a requirement to maintain a naturally vegetated buffer strip between a development and a property, that goes both ways. The residential owner can't impact the buffer and say, but the industrial user can't impact the buffer. And the residential owner who appealed had like a chicken coop in there and cleared a bunch of the trees. So it goes both ways.
The other thing is about that, you know, existing conditions.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? I don't care if the existing conditions are, they have to establish a vegetated buffer. Do you know what I mean? If that's a loophole is for people to go in and just clear cut things so that we can't impose vegetated natural buffers, then we should be able to impose planted buffers.
I'll take a gander.
Thank you.
Well, speaking of green, okay, you said, somebody said they wanted water quality on the thing every, every two weeks. Oh, it's here.
That's me.
So here's how we do the water quality. Okay, we all love clover lawns, right? I'll tell you all about them. I'm like a virtual expert in it, I think.
Just bought, I just bought a bunch of clover seeds myself.
I'll make it quick, I'll make it quick. The biggest reason that you want to have a clover, clover and turf lawn, you don't want to just have clover, you want to mix it, is because number one, clover takes nitrogen from the air, brings it to the soil and as a gas, it fertilizes the soil. So you don't have to use nitrogen. It's a weed, you know, but it'll, it'll out, outcompete all other weeds. So with the mix of turf, because you're doing it too, right, Evan?
Sorry, Karen, say that again, please. It's that time of night. My wife is starting to recheck me.
Okay.
Clover turf.
Clover turf.
Foot traffic does not hurt it. It comes right back. Dog urine does not turn it yellow. If you don't like the look of the clover when it blooms, because you get bees and you got kids running on your lawn, just cut the clover before the flowers come on. It's very easy to grow and here's how you plant it. First, you thatch the lawn and you all know what thatching is. Clean it all up, plant in early spring or plant in spring and early summer. Mix the clover with fescue, rye and some whatever else and clover, and I don't remember the percentages. And just walk up and down the lawn and drop the seeds on the lawn, but have the grass short because you don't want it floating on the top of the grass.
I was told one pound of seed covers ten thousand square feet.
Something like that, yeah. And then where you put that, put topsoil on it. Wet the ground and keep it moist until it germinates and that's it. It will mix with the grass and you won't see other weeds, those big, humpy, ugly weeds. So you don't have to put weed killer, you don't have to put fertilizer. And I've seen some lawns and they look pretty nice. I hope we can do it. But that, remember fifteen percent of, roughly fifteen percent of fertilizers is the cause for, you know, the nitrogen overload.
Sold, I'm going to do it.
All right.
I told you it's a good thing.
I make a motion to adjourn.
But don't bother with the last thing.
I'm sorry. I don't know, what's the last thing?
Did anybody have any board meetings? Cape Cod Commission, Community Preservation?
The Housing Strategy Third Stakeholder Meeting by the Cape Cod Commission got canceled. Do you know if it's been rescheduled?
I did not receive a notice of reschedule.
Okay.
CPC, no, no, no meeting?
No meeting for me. Plan review?
No meeting. Did I already report on the Mashpee Neck Marina? Did I report on that to you?
What, a report about what?
Okay, plan review met to review proposed expansion of the Mashpee Neck Marina. I guess where I reported on this.
I don't think you did.
But I will just reiterate, plan review met with the applicant at a plan review meeting. It was attended by a number of residents. I had met with many residents of the Pirates Cove neighborhood prior to plan review. I had met with the applicant a number of times prior to, to understand. There were a number of concerns, but also a lot of misunderstandings about the proposal and zoning from the neighborhood. I did my best to understand their concerns and address them with thoughtful conditions for the Board of Appeals to consider in their review of that petition. But I also tried to understand what Mr. Liedem, who is the property owner's, needs were in consideration of the expansion. Whereas I recommended and the plan review committee submitted a number of conditions that dealt with things like not being able to store boats above grade, limiting the number of any store boats on the expanded lot, requiring dark sky compliant lighting, enhancing the screening to the adjacent residential neighborhood by replacing the proposed amenities with Eastern Red Cedar. A number of conditions, all of which the applicant accepted. The neighbors seemed relatively, I felt that they felt heard. But I didn't make it, this is a controversial project. There were a number of concerns, so what I did was, I made the motion to recommend the conditions. If the, I voted to recommend the, those conditions as requirements of any permit should the Board of Appeals be able to make the necessary findings to approve the permit. But I didn't necessarily recommend the approval of the project, but I felt that there was a series of conditions that would mitigate and make the neighborhood feel as if they were, their concerns were valid and well-heard.
Very much.
And so I think they went to Ed and did a review of that particular plan and it'll be before the Board of Appeals, I think, next week.
He recommended that, that I review it, that someone, you know, professional review it and I did that. It was, it was only a week to play with and I reviewed it in a few days, banged up most of it over a weekend just so I could get it to Mary Ann Romero the next, the following Tuesday. And I, there were a number of issues that I brought up that, most of them were fairly minor that they could address, but I also did recommend that some of the conditions that Evan had proposed be included. So the dark sky compliance, I always put that in there. One of the things was, this is a residential property, a residential home, that they were going to basically strip and provide some additional parking, that overflow parking and a driveway connector to that overflow parking. You know, Evan made the point, well, we just don't want, we don't want to hurt a residential, you know, that residential use should not be allowed to expand beyond the use by that owner, by the, by the, by the property owner of the Marina or one of the employees. So you're not just having, he doesn't sell the house to John and Mary Smith and then John and Mary Smith hate the boatyard and are stuck with the whole problem. They understand that that could be used for employee housing, no problem. I think that was a good condition or be used by the owner himself only, not something else that they could sell because they basically created an industrial use or a related industrial use on the residential property. Sure, it helps out, helps out that property owner, helps out, you know, the overflow parking that they have there. I think that all is, you know, done well. I also listened to some of the board members and I recommended they have a spill kit on the site, even though they're proposing a gravel area, just to catch spills that might occur. Who knows? They're storing boats, right? So they accepted all of those changes. So they're in the final stages. They're still going through Concom review. There's a lot of mitigation because they're doing work in a, in a buffer zone. There's a lot of mitigation proposed, so mitigation plantings. So they're trying to provide some adequate mitigation there. The fire department reviewed it and looked at the fact that the access drive needed to be a certain width, that their gate, they basically fenced off the parking lot from the, basically the residential and parking area and the overflow parking are two different uses now in that lot. They fenced it off. They wanted to provide an emergency access gate in case the fire department had to get in there from a different direction on the residential side. They widened the gate accordingly. So there's a number of typical site plan review things that they needed to do and some new ones that Evan made and the plan review commenters helped with, so.
EOC.
So I, I got some information from the town manager. He said that the liaison appointments will be done by the Select Board on June 26th. And that what he recommended is that we approach that person and have them act as chair to convene the next meeting. Because that committee has not met in over a year. So that's what's, that's what's going on, Dale.
Is there any historic district commission?
No meeting.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Is there anything on the hazard mitigation plan workshop?
I did want to update you. So we're looking at July 14th for the next Hazard Mitigation Planning Workshop. It's not settled in stone yet, but I can confirm and produce the flyers and kind of go through the same motions I did before. I would like more participation. I think we got a lot of, we got, we did a good job of getting the word out, but it was not well attended. But I think it was a, you know, relatively short time commitment and was relatively fruitful for the time spent, as Mary kindly alluded to.
It was really cool because you got to take your poll live on Zoom. It was really, really, really cool.
So July 14th, I will confirm that date and I'll send you an email to that effect. I'll have Karen send you, Karen Leslie, an email to that effect. Again, the new Seabray Workshop for the Harbor Management Plan is, I believe, July 13th, the day before. Jeez. And Housing Production Plan, are you ready for another one? The, myself and our Housing Production Plan consultants will be meeting and presenting or discussing with the Form Housing Committee at their meeting on July 11th.
Oh, July 11th, 13th, 14th. You're going to be busy every day.
You know, summers are gone in municipal government, you know what I mean?
I know, and I just put in some time off from my boss.
Man.
She's like, that's a lot of time. I'm like, it's the summer.
You need it.
Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.